Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this morning's meeting of a special Adult Select Committee. And welcome to our guests from an Aranbeadh University Health Board. I'd like to start the meeting by electing a chair, please. The Chair for today's meeting is actually having an exam for her course and the Vice-Chair isn't able to chair. So if I could have a nomination, please, to chair today's meeting. councillor Dowie?
Councillor Paul Pavia.
Please, could I have a second? Okay, any one of those, okay. Whilst councillor Pavia is coming to the front, can I just remind everybody that we need to use our microphones for the purposes of the live streaming? And please make sure after you've spoken, you press the button to turn them off. And please, can we all turn mobiles on to silent? And we'll start by doing some introductions, please, of everyone in the room and then we can move on to apologies for absence. So my name's Hazel Illett, I'm Scrutiny Manager. To my right...
Richard Williams, Democratic Services.
Councillor Paul Pavia, nominated Chair for this committee session and obviously a member of this committee.
I'm Bronwyn John, the Project Manager for Integration and Head of Partnerships for Monmouthshire for the Health Board.
I'm Ian Thomas, the General Manager for Mental Health and Learning Disabilities in the Health Board.
Good morning, my name is Dr Chris O'Connor. I'm the Divisional Director for Mental Health and Learning Disabilities within the Health Board.
Good morning, my name is Peter Carr. I'm the Executive Director of Therapies and Health Science in an Aranbeadh University Health Board.
Good morning, my name is Leanne Watkins. I'm the Programme Director for Clinical Futures at an Aranbeadh University Health Board.
Good morning, I'm Nick Wood, Executive Director for Primary Care, Community Mental Health Services in the Health Board.
Good morning, I'm Tracey Morgan. I'm the General Manager for Primary Care and Community Services within the Health Board.
Hello, Claire Morgan, Service Manager for All Age Disability and Mental Health for the local authority.
Eve Parkinson, Head of Adult Services, Monmouthshire County Council.
Good morning, Julie Boothroyd, Director of Social Services, Monmouthshire County Council.
Morning, councillor Penny Jones, and I'm Cabinet Member for Social Services, Health and Safeguarding.
I'm Martin Grokert, I'm elected Member for Lansdowne Ward in Abigavenny.
Councillor Roger Harris, Crestone Ward, Abigavenny, and a member of this committee.
Good morning, Borraidda. My name's Tudor Thomas, elected Member for Priory in Abigavenny and just an observer on today's meeting.
Good morning, councillor Lisa Dimmock for Endie, Alms, and I'm a member of this committee.
Councillor David Dowie, elected Member for St King's Moark Ward in Chepstow.
Brian Strong, councillor for Ascot, observing.
David Evans, councillor for West End Ward in Caldicott and I'm observing.
Councillor Tony Easton, West End Ward, sorry, Douster Ward in Caldicott, an observer to this committee.
Jane Pratt, I represent Clenethley Hill and I'm a member of the Adults Committee.
Councillor Maureen Powell, member for Castle Ward in Abigavenny and here observing.
Morning, Sheila Woodhouse, member for Grofield Ward in Abigavenny and member of this committee.
Thank you very much. Before we start, councillor Dowie, could you possibly turn your microphone off, please? Thank you. Obviously, welcome to those councillors who are not usually a member of this committee. The extended invite was circulated to the wider council and anyone who was interested. So I'm glad there's a number of observers here this morning and obviously you'll be allowed to ask questions as well. So if we go into the first item on the agenda, apologies for absence.
Yes, Chair, apologies from councillors Blakeborough Brown Webb and Smith.
Item number two, declarations of interest. Any declarations at this stage? Yes, councillor Pratt?
I've made a personal declaration which I've given to the officer.
I think I'll do it...
Do you want me to tell you the nature of it?
Yeah, if you could, sorry.
My brother is Professor Richard Griffiths and he works for National Health in England and he's also delivering a lecture to this Health Board later in the year.
Thank you very much. I'll declare an interest as well. I'm a policy adviser to ADSS Camry, so there's obviously linkage between health and social care. Any others? David? Okay. Any others? If anything does come to you when we're going through the various questions for the third item, then do declare it and obviously fill in your pro-formas and submit them to Richard at the end. Okay, item number three. So we have a verbal update from senior representatives of the Aranbeadh University Health Board. And initially it's regarding Chepstow Hospital because it's coming up to, must be about 10, 11 months, colleagues came to look at the re-provision of older adult mental health services within the hospital at that time. And we did say we would invite them back to have an open dialogue about, you know, the future of the hospital there and what new service provision might look like in the future. But also, I think colleagues are going to take questions as well about the sort of wider reorganisation of services in light of the development of Llangwyrdd, which should be operational within the next two years or so. So there's going to be impact there on the Royal Gwent and on obviously on Neville Hall. So I know there's a number of members in the north of the county here who'd be interested in asking some questions about that. So can I, I don't know who's going to open up, Nick? Okay, thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Chair. So yeah, what we propose this morning is just to give brief verbal updates around the provision of health services in the Chepstow area, which Bronwyn is able to provide. And then colleagues from mental health are able to give a verbal update on the service provision around older adult mental health, which I think is what we discussed here 12, 15 months ago. And then other colleagues are here to take questions, any questions that you wish to ask around our Clinical Futures Programme and the development of the Grange University Hospital, which as Chair pointed out, is on track, on budget and on schedule to open as advised in 2021.
21?
I must get the date right eventually. March 21, thank you. So if you're happy to proceed in that way, Chair, we'll start with Bronwyn, who can give an update around Chepstow Hospital.
Good morning, everybody. What I'm going to start with is the work that has been done on the Chepstow site and in the process of being done at the moment, to give you a flavour for how the use of the site is moving forward. The first thing is that we've converted the former shop at the main entrance to the site, which has been empty for some time because we were unable to secure a tenancy because it's not financially viable for a business to run, into a multi-use information discussion area. Anybody who knows the site knows it's right by the main entrance, so it's a really good place for people who are coming to the site to see what's actually available. The intention is that the facility will be coordinated by Fred Weston, who's the Community Wellbeing Coordinator. Some of you will be aware of Fred, he is employed by the local authority and he has wide-reaching hands into the community in the Chepstow and Caldicott areas. It's important both for visitors to the hospital, outpatients and for inpatients and their relatives to be able to access information about services that are available, not so much within the hospital, although that will be there, but primarily for them to be able to link what they've been to do within the hospital to outside support. We've had a number of organisations who've already expressed interest in being in the information point. It's going to open in May, so very soon, within the next two to three weeks. We're just waiting for the final bits of furniture and computer equipment to arrive. And the organisations interested are GAVO, the Gwent Association of Voluntary Organisations, MIND, the Community Connections Befriending and Community Car Scheme, which we'll be covering off in a little while, PACE, which is helping parents into volunteering by providing free childcare, Volunteering for Wellbeing, supporting people to access a range of volunteering opportunities, working in partnership with the council, which I'm sure a lot of you are aware of that scheme already, Building Bridges, working with young people with disabilities, and Monmouthshire Housing Association, Social Inclusion and Housing and Wellbeing. They're the ones that have already committed, but we do hope to have a presence from more organisations as that information point becomes more known to the community. The second piece of work that's been happening over the last few months is a series of enabling works to enable the two wards on the ground floor to move upstairs. You'll be aware of the vacant ward, which is where the older adult mental health ward used to be, and the ward next to that upstairs is currently the Older Adult Community Mental Health Team base. And what we want to do is to move the patients, the inpatients upstairs for a number of reasons. The main one being that the main corridor of the hospital actually divides the two wards at the moment, and we try to operate the wards as one unit to make sure that the patients who are in the most need get the most care. And that's quite difficult to do when you've got a main corridor between them. And by moving upstairs, we can create a private environment and the wards can be linked via a centralised nursing station and corridor, which means that effectively they can operate as one unit, although there will still be two completely separate areas. Just to reassure people, there are no bed closures as a result of this, this is purely a transfer of the services. The other benefit of doing that is that it enables us to use the ground floor more effectively for the more volume services, so that the creation of the health and wellbeing hub will be easier because we'll have more capacity on the ground floor for more services to be provided on the ground floor of the hospital without affecting the inpatients. As part of the ward move, the area at one end of the ward will be converted to create a six-bedded frailty assessment area. Those of you that were here last time will remember that we've been running a pilot for taking direct admissions into Chepstow without older frail patients needing to go to the Royal Gwent Hospital for assessment and then ultimately being transferred back. That pilot has been running for quite a few months now and we've learned a lot of lessons from it. There's been some ups and downs, as you would expect with a pilot, but we are now moving to the concept of a six-bedded frailty assessment area, which will enable appropriate patients to be admitted directly. One of the things we found from the pilot was that we thought that the majority of the patients would be frail older people in the sort of category of having multiple things wrong with them. What we've actually found is that there is actually a need for other people who could be dealt with appropriately at Chepstow, as well as that category for the frail older people. So that is being evaluated at the moment and when the ward opens upstairs, the intention is that that will be part of that unit. We've sought further funding from this year's Integrated Care Fund allocation. There are a number of other schemes that we would like to pursue. Obviously, in order to create the new wards upstairs, we need to transfer the older adult CMHT base downstairs because that's in half of the area upstairs at the moment. And we're just waiting for alterations to the IT infrastructure to make that possible because obviously their office staff need more computers than you generally need on a ward. The outpatients department at the hospital is almost full with clinics taking place in there. We've already expanded into the former minor injuries unit and we've got a number of clinics happening there. We've moved since the last time we were here, the health visitor and midwifery clinics down to the former MIU. Because it's a more suitable environment for them, it was done at their request, they're very happy with their new accommodation, they have got their own waiting area now. And it's appropriate rather than waiting in the main outpatient department, that's what all the guidance says that we should do. So that is working well. And we've also now moved the older adult mental health clinics down into the former day hospital. And that is also working well, although we do need to do more work. What our intention now is, is to put together a scheme for this year's funding to do some more work in the day hospital part of the building because it's actually got, for example, eight toilets in it, which you really don't need for an outpatient department, all in separate rooms. So we want to actually do some work to convert space to make it appropriate for clinical use. And that is a scheme in itself, which will give us the capacity to do more clinics at Chepstow going forwards. We've got the intention when we've got more capacity downstairs because of the wards moving upstairs, to move towards creating a children's unit as well. We'd like to move the officers for the health visitors, the midwives and the remainder of the clinics which still take place in main outpatients, for example paediatric speech therapy, those sorts of clinics, we'd like to move those down to the same end of the building as the outpatient clinics are taking place now. So that's another plan. And we also need to provide increased space for the integrated health and social care team, who are growing exponentially. We're desperate to move more staff onto the site. They are going to stay where they are, but by moving other people out, it'll enable us to have more space that we can allocate to them. So those are the capital things that we're planning and there's a lot of work already happened and a lot of work still to come to move us towards that new future. But it will ultimately give us the capacity on the ground floor for a fully integrated health and wellbeing hub. Specific services since the last time we were here, I've mentioned about the health visitor and baby clinics. We've also got a new perinatal mental health clinic, which started in November of last year. That is for mums who are struggling with their mental health as a result of the birth of their baby and that is happening from the new unit. The older adult mental health clinics and dementia assessment, as I mentioned, has also moved, that moved down in January, should I say. New things that we've got, we've got patient education group sessions being run by a physiotherapist for managing osteoarthritis of the knee and low back pain, which have started and are taking place every six weeks in Chepstow to cover the South Monmouthshire population. We've got adult weight management clinics, which have started this month, last month, should I say. The frailty assessment unit, I've already mentioned. The frailty assessment unit will also result in new staff being appointed. We will have a consultant in frailty for Monmouthshire, who'll cover the whole of Monmouthshire and will run clinics, both in Chepstow and in Abigavenny and Monmouth, to support that clinic. That will be supported by a rapid response nursing team. The idea being that where patients can be assessed in the community or by coming to the hospital for a clinic rather than being admitted, that will be the preferred choice. And the consultant will then also be in charge of the frailty assessment beds at Chepstow. So it is a new model of service. And will avoid admission to the Royal Gwent or to Neville Hall. We've had a request for a monthly gastroenterology clinic as well. That will be something we're very keen to do. We're just trying to resolve the issues with staffing for that clinic because it takes us above the complement of staff we've actually got in the outpatients department as well. So we need some funding, which is being addressed at the moment. And we've also run expert patient education sessions from the hospital. Those are going to alternate between Chepstow and Caldicott. They're for patients to become experts in managing their own condition. They're run through GAVO and they are a support group really for people who've got long-term conditions like diabetes or arthritis or whatever, for them to actually learn how to best manage the condition as well as having the professional support that they need. And that's a Welsh Government model. The care of the elderly clinic, which we talked about last time, hasn't yet started. There have been some operational difficulties in the care of the elderly directorate, which is based down in St Willis Hospital in Newport. It is being pursued by our division because it's something we are really keen to get off the ground. So it's not dead, it's just been very difficult to actually get it happening within this time period. So that is still ongoing. In terms of communicating with people about what we're doing, anybody who's a regular visitor to the hospital or to their GPs based in the hospital will have seen that we've got a new integrated newsletter, the first edition of which was produced in February. And that gives an outline of basically what I've talked about this morning. It was circulated throughout Monmouthshire, so it should also be available in Monavale and Mardi Park. And it went out to the GP practices. It explains the work being undertaken and the new services and it's gone out to all the staff groups as well as being available for people to pick up. And we're also doing a public engagement exercise in Chepstow Hospital at the moment with visitors being asked for their views on services going forward. And we're doing it on an ad hoc basis to try to pick up as many people attending different things as we can. I think we've got about 70 replies back so far, but it is going to be an ongoing process. Not to forget Caldicott Health Centre, which we also talked about last time, which is the other pillar of the services in South Monmouthshire. We received very late funding approval from Welsh Government for the alterations that we need to do at Caldicott. So they weren't able to start before the end of March because we couldn't get the work completed in the financial year. However, we have made some moves forward, we have recruited now a receptionist and we are waiting for approval for this year. So the scheme is all ready to run to improve the accommodation at Chepstow. We're waiting for approval through the ICF process for this year. And as I said, the receptionist is going to be there from next month and we will then be able to start the consultant paediatrician clinics in advance of the rest of the alterations to that building. So that's a summary of where we are. I hope that wasn't too fast.
Okay, thanks Bronwyn. Shall we take questions focused on Chepstow first and then we can have an update then on the wider piece? Sorry, Chris, did you want to say anything on top of that?
I wonder whether it's just maybe taking some pause and questions on that and then maybe move on to the changes around older adult mental health services? Probably the best way.
Okay. Who's going to kick us off? Yeah, councillor Pratt?
Thank you, Chair. Can I thank you very much Bronwyn for, you know, that update. Can I just ask you how much all these alterations are costing the National Health Service to put in place, you know, putting the wards upstairs and all the other alterations that are taking place? How much is it actually costing?
It's not, it's actually specifically designated money by Welsh Government for improving intermediate care services. There's a capital pot within that, which is a partnership pot, which is managed through the Regional Partnership Board, rather than being Health Board capital funding, just to be sort of clear on the process. The amount that's been approved this year, last year, was £200,000, which is the enabling works for the ward and the alterations to the shop. That we've requested, that has not all been spent, so we've requested that that is carried forward into the current financial year to enable us to complete the ward element and the move of the older adult mental health team downstairs. The remaining schemes are to go forward for this year, so haven't yet been costed. So they aren't finalised as schemes, but they'll go in as separate schemes because depending on the amount of money available at a Gwent level, we thought it was better to have individual schemes rather than to put it all into one huge pot because we're bidding against schemes throughout the rest of Gwent as well.
Is that okay? Jane?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, obviously I'd like to know the bigger figure. I mean, whichever pot this money comes from, it's still taxpayers' money that's being spent. And it just seems to me that we seem to spend an awful lot of money reorganising things and sometimes do they really need reorganising? But, you know, you've explained well the benefits at the hospital to putting the two wards into one. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Easton?
Thank you, Chair. I've got several questions. When your representative made some presentation at the Law Wye about two or three weeks ago, councillor Dowie was there, there was some question which I didn't quite understand about consultancy services being expanded. You did just touch on them slightly there, but it was talking orthopaedics and things like that. Are you going to improve the, or increase the consultancy services available to the residents on an ad hoc basis really? That's the first question. Second question is regarding bed blocking in the Royal Gwent, where I understand, this is an ongoing issue, you're not going to resolve it overnight, but people seem to be having a problem being taken to Chepstow Hospital because of various reasons. In Chepstow Hospital, you can't do it. There was one in particular some months ago where the person had to go home rather than go to Chepstow because it couldn't be accommodated in Chepstow. And I understand there's another one, a person I know is waiting to go to Chepstow now. The other ones about outpatients, could you expand a bit more on the outpatients? You mentioned midwifery, but is there more to it? And what are you doing about audio services, audiology services? I understand there's going to be some change there. Another final one, Carmar Road. Would it be possible to give the local councillors in Caldicott a briefing on where you're going about that particular unit? Because that's a satellite to Chepstow. That's an ongoing matter that could be helped. Thank you.
Right, there's quite a lot of questions there. I'll do my best to answer them. In terms of consultant-led clinics, which I think is what you mean, a number of the clinics that we have introduced and are proposing to introduce are consultant-led clinics. And a number of the others are members of the consultant team who come out to see patients that is within their scope of practice to see. So the gastroenterology clinic I mentioned, the perinatal mental health clinic, and the care of the elderly clinic would all be led by consultants. The consultants would physically be at the hospital for those. And the frailty clinics, frailty service going forward would be a consultant and that person would be a Monmouthshire employee, employed by the community division. So a number of the clinics are consultant clinics. A number of the other services, for example, the osteoarthritis of the knee and lower back pain clinics are, you'll be aware that we have a back pain service which is provided by a GP who is supported with physiotherapists. And that's been running for some years in Monmouthshire. We're unique in actually having that in Gwent. The consultant service, there is already a consultant orthopaedic surgeon who has requested to transfer a session to Chepstow. We're limited in what we can do for orthopaedic services in community hospitals though because although we do have X-ray services, we don't have the other supporting services that they need. But they can do follow-up clinics. The service I specifically mention today is to prepare people for surgery for the osteoarthritis of the knee, so that people fully understand what they're signing up for if they decide to go ahead with an operation and that they're prepared for the amount of work that they need to put in themselves. It's not a straightforward, everybody who has it has a 100% success rate. So people are supported through the process of living with their condition whilst they're waiting for an operation and making a decision themselves about whether an operation is the right thing for them. So that's a physiotherapy-led service. And the physiotherapists are also advising on the management of lower back pain in their group sessions. So in a way, they are like the expert patient programme in some ways really, that people are informed and understand how best to manage their condition. So that was hopefully answered, that first one.
The bed, oh, go on, sorry.
Bed blocking at Chepstow Hospital and at the Royal Gwent. There are two aspects to this. The waiting time for patients who are... Bed blocking at Chepstow Hospital and at the Royal Gwent. There are two aspects to this. The waiting time for patients who are appropriate for transfer to Chepstow, based on their clinical condition being suitable for management at Chepstow, is generally not a problem. If somebody is suitable for transfer, then they're usually transferred quite quickly to Chepstow. There are patients who, I hate the term bed blocking because it makes somebody sound like they're being a nuisance, and that's not what it's about at all, but people who are unable to move on to the next stage of their care do wait longer at Chepstow in some cases than would be ideal. And people who are at the Royal Gwent who aren't suitable for Chepstow, because they aren't there to undergo rehabilitation or subacute care, can wait in the Royal Gwent for packages to be developed or for them to go on to their next care as well. We have got information about that. We do report routinely on delayed transfers of care, but it isn't generally a huge problem in Monmouth, in Monmouthshire. It's not something that, I think, what I think is quite interesting is that when we did the, as I think I mentioned before, when we did, or when we're doing the pilot for the frailty assessment unit, it's very difficult to box people into categories and say, this is what a pathway is, because every patient is different, and some of the requests for transfer to Chepstow aren't possible because of the expertise of the staff at Chepstow to deal with that. And they aren't necessarily older people, generally speaking, they're not, they're people who've got more complex problems, and we're constantly working with the nursing team at Chepstow, Tracy can probably speak more about that than I can, to upgrade people's skills so that we can expand the range of patients that we're able to take there.
Excuse us while we have some technical difficulties.
There we go. Are we on? Is that okay? Okay, so Bronwyn talked earlier about the frailty assessment units, and I think you're right, when, at the moment, patients have no option other than to go either to the Royal Gwent or to Neville Hall Hospital to have their immediate needs resolved. What we're trying to identify through the frailty pilot is for patients that don't need that acute intervention but do need a little bit more help with that intermediate arm, trying to keep people as local as we possibly can. So in Chepstow, in Erbavale and in Newport, we're developing a graduated care model where patients can step up from their home, receive that secondary care interface but without having to go into the acute hospitals. By bringing patients into the community hospital, we're shortening their length of stay, allowing them to be seen by that integrated team, which in Monmouth, as you know, has been embedded for a long time. So these are community teams that the patients and the residents of Monmouth are very well-known to. Those teams are in reaching into Chepstow Hospital to support their patient to come home back as quickly as we possibly can. What we're doing currently is missing a group of patients, so they are going straight to the Royal Gwent without having to be able to come into Chepstow Hospital. So the work that we're doing, and what we hope with the consultant that we're going to be appointing to the frailty team, is improving that pathway so people can have their care provided locally within Chepstow Hospital and avoid going to the Royal Gwent. We know that's better for the patient, we know that shortens their length of stay, their families and their relatives can visit them more easily, and they're not pulled into that secondary care interface that they don't need to be there. We have learnt, I think Bronwyn's right, we've learnt, we had a set idea of what the patients' needs were, and as with anything, when we started admitting patients, we recognised we needed a little bit more OT support, a little bit more support from phlebotomy and the bloods. So that is all being worked through with the pilot to allow us to improve the numbers that are going through. We'll have the dedicated six beds when we move upstairs, and we're hoping then we can reduce the length of stay for patients that are currently having to go to the Royal Gwent Hospital. In terms of the example you gave of somebody who went home before went to Chepstow Hospital, our premise will always be to get somebody home, we will always aim to do home first, and if somebody isn't able to go home, whether it's with support or not, then we will look to the community hospital. But if somebody's had that slightly extended length of stay, we'll always look to take somebody home before we move them to hospital, because evidence proves that's better for the individual.
You actually investigated that particular problem, and it was a failure at Royal Gwent. You've accepted that, so hopefully it won't happen again.
Yeah. Thank you.
Could you, could you go on to answer, I'm new?
Outpatients, I think I've pretty much told you where we are at the moment. We are, we have got a development group for both North and South Monmouthshire, and we're constantly seeking additional services. We've had quite a few, as I mentioned in my presentation, happened already in the last few months since we were here last, and we are working with a number of the directorates to actually get more services provided locally. One of those services is audiology. I can't give you any details on that, but that is something, Mel Ladler is doing a large piece of work on that, and that is something that we're actively pursuing to get more clinics out into the community hospitals. There is, to be honest, I don't know the answer to that for audiovisual. I don't know what they're doing.
Line my fingerprint, isn't it? What we're trying to do with both audiology, ophthalmology, audiovisual services is move as much as we possibly can out of, I suppose, secondary care hospitals, so acute settings like the Royal Gwent. So we've done a trial of audiology in Blaine Gwent, where the service has been provided by different service providers other than hospitals in the community for all the lower-level hearing issues that people may or may not have. That's proved to be extremely successful because it stops, one, the long waits for an initial outpatient appointment and then treatment at, usually the Royal Gwent with audiology. And in terms of ophthalmology, we've already, over the last two years, moved something in the region of 7,000 patient appointments into provision in either spec savers or other optometry provision in the community, and we're looking to continue to do that. I think we deliver in the region of 20,000 ophthalmology glaucoma first appointments and follow-up appointments across Gwent in a year, and our aim is to move probably 15,000 of those to somewhere that is much closer to where people live, so they can access the service in their local town or local optometry. And I think the service for audiology and, I suppose what you would call, in some respects, minor conditions, will move that way so that we can then focus our resources in secondary care on the more complex and more appropriate provision of those services in those particular areas. So that's, I think that's probably perhaps what you've picked up in conversations, but that, the Blaine Gwent trial has proved very, very successful, and is now, we're now looking to roll that out across Gwent. Ophthalmology, we've probably been the first Health Board to really push big numbers out into the community, and that, again, I think is going to continue at pace over the next couple of years as that service starts to develop and we work with partners to try and commission that service on a wider footprint.
Okay, thank you. I think there's, is there one more question, one more response on the satellite study?
Regarding Carmar Road, could that be taken as a specific matter to the Seventh Estate Committee to be discussed there?
Absolutely, yeah. I haven't done a full briefing on that for today, but we've got that information, so we do know what additional services we're planning to provide from there, and the scheme that we need to bring the premises up to, the standard that we need it to be for the provision of the children's pilot, integrated pilot. So yeah, by all means, I'm happy to come and talk to that, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, councillor Dwyer?
Thank you Chair. I'm pleased to hear that progress is being made with the hospital, very pleased. The issue for me really is keeping track on you guys, and so what I would like from you, it's very good you come in here and answering questions and all that sort of thing, and very important, but that doesn't, I can't write as far as fast as you are answering to get all down, I wanted to get down. So what I would like, and I think it would be helpful to other members as well, is that we have a relatively simple document from you indicating what is your plans for the hospital in terms of the treatments, diagnosis, whatever. I'd like to know as well what you are going to require in new personnel, if any, because if you can't get the personnel, you can't do the treatment you're planning for us. I'd like to know as well what the details of outpatients and people that are perhaps staying in. And I'd like as well a thing about your vision going forward and progress on that, and I think that would enable us to be better fitted to ask you the right questions when you get here. I mean, and I'm not trying to be awkward, are you, you, I've given up being awkward. Trying to be helpful. But you've come here in force today for us. It would be helpful if there was some relatively simple document about your plans forward and what is going to, it is going to entail to do that, and then we'd be better able to ask you, ask the right questions of you when you get here.
Shall I pin that up Chair?
Yep.
So I think recognizing that we obviously need to inform, obviously, local elected members as well as the public and the patients that come to Chepstow, I think that was the whole aim of the newsletter that is jointly produced with, because Monmouth, the services we provide in Monmouthshire, particularly around the community, are an integrated set of services that are the responsibility of both, you know, the Health Board and obviously the local authority. And the aim of the provision around a health and wellbeing centre within Chepstow Hospital is to absolutely embed that integrated model for the population of South Monmouthshire. And the production of a newsletter which then informs and advises patients, visitors, the general public around the services that are available and when they will be available, we recognise we weren't doing particularly well, and that's obviously the aim of the newsletter. I'm also conscious that on a local basis, for local district councils, that obviously myself and my assistant director regularly sort of communicate with local councillors in terms of particular issues centred locally around Chepstow or the Lower Y Valley, so and we're more than happy to continue to provide and do that. And I think the partnership that we've got with yourselves as a local authority is absolutely at the centre of what we're doing in the provision there. So, you know, I hope that the newsletter and the information we provide through the hub within the hospital will provide that access to information and knowledge for the population so that we can continue to serve them in the best possible way. In terms of provision of staff, I think, you know, the challenge of recruitment retention is one that is felt right across Wales, right across the UK in terms of nursing, doctors, other healthcare providers. I think we've been quite well-served actually in Monmouthshire in terms of our ability to recruit and retain staff, particularly in the south of the patch, which is becoming more challenging in the north, and we've probably come on to Neville Hall a little bit later on where we've got some unique challenges about recruitment and retention. And I think we're very confident that we'll be able to recruit to the consultant post within the frailty provision and to the rapid response team, and we've been successful in the past at recruiting new staff into both Chepstow Hospital and into the community teams in that particular area. But I don't think that in any way takes away from the fact that it is uniquely challenging at the minute to recruit staff at all levels in all sorts of different services, and that's a long-term problem that we're going to face for at least the next five or 10 years as health service changes and the demands of the public grow. So I hope that's, that sort of response is what you were looking for. I'm, you know, happy to discuss on an individual basis how we provide you with further information as and when services change and come on board. It is a fairly fluid set of options around outpatients at the minute, because it will be about space in the building itself, but also then our ability to get the consultants to come to a specific space to offer that service, and whether that service is appropriate for that specific space, but also to some extent on the demand, because there's got to be sufficient numbers within different services for it to be a proposition that we can move forward. So I think the aim of the newsletter is absolutely to keep that information flow going and for us to continually update what services are provided at the hospital and we plan to provide as we go forward.
I think for us Nick, we need to ensure that we monitor timescales or the timescales on the proposals that Bronwyn set out earlier, you know, we need to monitor that as a council. But I don't know whether, just going back to councillor Dwyer's point, is there any data sets that can be extrapolated specifically for Chepstow that ordinarily you're going to report into the board, that we can have on a quarterly basis, that may help us in our overall monitoring capacity as councillors?
There's obviously a lot of data, I mean, we have more data than we know what to do with a lot of the time, and we can extract that in any number of ways in terms of where people live or reside or receive service. So I think it's perhaps worth the conversation outside of here about what sort of data or information you're looking for. I mean, in terms of the list of things that Bronwyn has gone through this morning in terms of the programme, absolutely we have an action plan, absolutely we have a timetable and an aim of delivering those in a particular way, and absolutely we can share that with you. In terms of extracting data around specifics of services in South Monmouthshire, we can do that, but I think I'd rather understand exactly what it is, because otherwise we could produce a report like this, and I'm not sure that that would be particularly useful.
Councillor Dwyer, do you want to come back?
Yes, thank you Chair. I think we're actually getting there. I'm beginning to understand more about the information that you can provide, and I think perhaps you could provide us with too much information in a way, and I think the Chair has got it right. Maybe that it would be a good idea if we compiled what we would like to see as a report from you, and you tell us what hopefully you can do, and if there are reasons that you can't in actual fact give us some of the information we require, if there is a valid reason and you just say why, that would be fine, but it would give us an idea of what is going on with you, because you're trying to put together something that is very new. In another world it would be called entrepreneurial, I suppose, and it is worth us knowing how that is going forward. And there are people in here that have skills from another life, if you like, where there might be areas that they could touch on that you might not have thought of and bring something to the party, so that's what I am looking for. Should we start off by saying if we can define Chair, what sort of document we would like to see from you, and you see if you can accommodate that, and you might make some suggestions, how it might be improved as well, and then we'd have some way of monitoring how we go forward, because I think it's important, we don't, you've got an entirely new initiative here. I want to see this work, I don't want us to be back in the position that we were 18 months, two years ago. I think we have to have something that we're both comfortable with and we can see the way we're going ahead. That's what I would like to see. Thank you Chair.
Thanks councillor Dwyer. If we look- If, if we, if we look then to perhaps work with Chief Officer and Head of Service outside of the meeting and so we can come to some sort of set of, you know, data sets that, that's going to be helpful to, to the, to the council to monitor. Councillor Dimmock, I think was next.
Thank you for coming again today. It's lovely to see you all. My question is, I'd like an update on the community based services for the dementia patients in South Monmouthshire and North Monmouthshire if possible. Obviously you provided a vast list of great things that are coming, but I want more information on those if possible.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've got a couple of questions as well. Can we just hold that for, for a minute while we're just focusing on the, on the other thing? In terms of gastroenterology, is there going to be a link with Gwent Drug and Alcohol Service because they're obviously based in, in Chepstow as well? Is there, is there going to be sort of a continuum there between the, the two? Because obviously just thinking of Welsh Government strive to, to get rid of hepatitis C by 2030. I know that we're looking potentially more in terms of the, the, kind of my words up this morning, sorry. In, in terms of the, the deadline, I know the Welsh Government potentially looking to, to bring that forward if possible, if, you know, if the provision is there locally. And I think it would be really good if that, you know, that connectivity between third sector and, and health could be developed there in, in Chepstow.
What's been requested so far is a monthly initially outpatient follow-up clinic run by Dr Ballaratnam, who's one of the consultant gastroenterologists at the Royal Gwent. I'm no expert, but I would imagine there are very strong links between gastroenterology and the drug and alcohol service pre-existing. But this specific clinic is intended to stop local patients needing to travel to Newport for follow-up appointments.
And just in terms of integrated, the integrated model that's being developed, I know we, we touched on it last time when you, when you came, as I said, it was about 11, 12 months ago. I think you said then there was a, there was a section 30 in place. I'd just like to know in, in terms of the, the management and the transparency of, of cash flows, is it, we all know who's spending what and who's, what pots of money are being submitted, et cetera. Is that, that's all, all clear? Everyone happy with that? Yeah? Yeah, okay. I think I've got something from councillor Brown, who's the, who's the vice chair who couldn't be here today. I know we've talked about again the, the minor injuries unit, but obviously clearly with the, the new programme, you know, you've got plans for that space and you've already, you're already utilising that space. I think councillor Brown was concerned about closures to Lidney Hospital and, and potential pressures that might have on, on local provision. If an MIU is, is, is definitely off the, the table, which it sounds like it is, what are we doing locally to, to work with the GP practices and, and wider GP clusters to, to allow more minor unit, minor injury services within those, within those GP spaces?
Thank you. It's becoming a bit of a comedy though. So we can be absolutely clear that the minor injuries provision that was at Chepstow Hospital will not be reintroduced. It's not part of our clinical futures plan. We will retain a minor injuries unit at the Royal Gwent Hospital and Neville Hall Hospital when the Grange University Hospital opens. And the provision there of minor injuries at both Neville Hall and the Royal Gwent will probably be improved by the fact that the majors element of what is currently the accident and emergency unit will move to the Grange and therefore the service provision should therefore improve at those two sites. And I'm very conscious, obviously, as Lidney Hospital is being closed and their minor injuries unit is being closed and the, the rebuild of a new facility in South Gloucestershire. I think, is it, I can never remember whether it's Colford or Cinderford, it always confused me which one, Cinderford. My understanding is there will be some minor injuries unit provision there. And it's, it's, so we, we have a contract where we pay South Gloucestershire for services that they provide for residents of Monmouthshire in the main for the use of Lidney's minor injuries unit. It is very, very small numbers on an annual basis. And so the move of that provision up the A48 to Cinderford, I, I would suggest that we, we'll probably get even less people going across the border to utilise that service. But on the wider issue of provision within GP services, we've recently got a new network, neighbourhood care network lead in South Monmouthshire GP from the Towngate practice in the hospital. And Dr Gray, who was the NCN lead for South Monmouthshire, who works in, in Caldecott, is currently working on the provision of frailty services for the whole of Gwent and has been, is actually behind the provision that we're talking about introducing at Chepstow Hospital. In terms of minor injuries, what we have seen is in certain parts of Gwent where we as a health board have had to step in and manage a number of GP practices, particularly in Cefilly North and Blaine and Gwent, we've introduced a multidisciplinary team model in those practices. Because the provision of GPs is so challenging, we've replaced some of their sessions with minor injuries, minor injuries trained nurses, advanced nurse practitioners, pharmacists, mental health practitioners and some physio and OT services. What that's showing us is the, where the demands are for particular services as people visit their GP practice. And it's allowed us to start to triage people into different services so that the GPs spend more time doing what only they can do and that actually patients get seen more effectively by some of the nurse practitioners, some of the mental health practitioners, et cetera. So we are actively encouraging a number of our practices where we may or may not have vacancies in GP provision and therefore struggle to provide a full complement of services to look at their multidisciplinary model so that they potentially could then recruit an advanced nurse practitioner, pharmacist, et cetera, to provide that service. Now, there are obviously three relatively big practices in South Monmouthshire, the two in the Chepstow Hospital and at Caldecott, which could afford us the opportunity to utilise space and gaps in rotas, et cetera, to introduce this sort of multidisciplinary approach. We've already introduced the pharmacy service into those practices, which was funded centrally from a pot of money that was, was allocated to general medical services for this last financial year. So I think that's probably the way in which it is going to move forward. As we commission services in, in general practice and because they are independent contractors, it's sometimes be more difficult for us to actually tell them what to do rather than encourage them what to do. So we, we, we make money available for certain enhanced services and cer- certain local services that if they sign up to, they can get access to and then provide the service. But we cannot insist that they must have a minor injuries nurse or a mental health practitioner unless we are running the practice. And we, and that's not a model we particularly want to go down. So we have a very good relationship actually with the, the leads across Monmouthshire and they are both very keen to adapt models and be flexible in terms of think where we've seen things work, those things are starting to be developed and rolled out. And again, there's the, the classic recruitment challenges and all of those things that come with that. But I think, yes, as, as we start to see general medical services, in particular GP services, slightly consolidate, I suppose, into bigger practices, what you will see is the development of a wider multidisciplinary workforce that then offers a wider range of services such as minor injuries, mental health, physio, OT, et cetera, as we move forward over the next few years. And I, I'm, I see Chepstow and Caldecott as being quite well placed to be able to deliver those over, over time.
Thanks, Nick, that was helpful. I understand, you know, you can compel private practice, but is there a way of incentivising them to, to speed up their, you know, their thinking and their provision?
And that's exactly what the local enhanced service and the NCN, so we, we, we were asked as part of the development of the NCN, so the clusters of GP practices, to allocate budget to each of the individual clusters, which we did. And that budget was for them to spend on service provision and service enhancement that they felt was, was going to improve what, what was provided. So the first step, I think about 12, 18 months ago, and that was the provision of pharmacists based in each of the 15 NCN, sorry, 12 NCNs. We recruited 15 pharmacists across the 12 NCNs to provide that pharmacy service. So medication reviews, repeat prescriptions, all of the things that takes up GPs' time. That was initiated through the GPs and the NCNs funded by the Health Board into, in effect partnerships. That's proved to be success. I've now said to the NCN leads, we will now look to roll that model out across the whole of Gwent, potentially looking at a further 10 or 12 pharmacists across our patch. And we will fund that and then give them back their development money so they can try something else in the next 12 months. So we're meeting with them in early part of May to discuss how we do that. And I think that's the encouragement that we're trying to give them. We're able to show them the results of what's going on in our managed practices. And that, again, I think encourages that innovation and initiation of some of those things.
Thanks, Nick. I think there was a, a link point to this as well concerning diagnostics and particularly, not necessarily the, the time people are waiting to have diagnostics taken within the, particularly x-rays, et cetera, within the Chepstow Hospital. But in terms of the interpretation of diagnostics, I think councillor Evans, you had, you had a concern about quite a long delay in terms of diagnostic wait.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, seven weeks and we still haven't had any result on a chest x-ray. And we've run up on two or three occasions, oh, you'll have to wait, you'll have to wait. And that is worrying when the person, well, it's my wife it is, she's struggling to breathe and she gets panic attacks. So that is a concern. And the other concern is that x-rays, I will say now, the x-ray department at Bury is excellent. Where before it wasn't, I couldn't say that. And you ring up for an appointment, can you come up now or can you come tomorrow before? Or we can see you for four or five days. And that was concerning. And it's not just a personal thing, it's you, I can get in these feedbacks from other patients, other people who go to see their doctor and they refer to Chepstow Hospital and they have to wait a certain amount of time. You, you don't expect to go in, make a phone call and they say come in now, you know that's not going to happen. But I think a reasonable time, 24, 48 hours because of the seriousness, otherwise you wouldn't be sent there for an x-ray. So I think that needs to be checked out on the reasons why they're not coming back with the results quicker.
Do you want to respond to that, Nick?
So on your wife's case, clearly that's a seven week wait is unacceptable. And so Tracy and I will pick up with you individually afterwards and, and look into why that is the case. In terms of diagnostics itself, in terms of the wait for the diagnostic, we're now in a position where with investment in things like x-ray staff, further provision of MRI and CT scanning machines, both at Neville Hall, Euston Monarch and in Gwent, we've been able to lower diagnostic waits down so that I think it's 99.9% of those people waiting for a diagnostic get seen within six weeks. The biggest challenge is then the interpretation and the reporting of the results because they tend to have to be done by a slightly higher trained member of staff. So I think we're conscious that in terms of x-ray in particular, our plain film, what's called plain film reporting has been quite lengthy. Some of that is based upon the urgency of the actual case, but it is something that we're trying to work through. We're, we're conscious that it is too long at the moment and that we're trying to get the wait time, we've got the wait time down to actually have your diagnostic, but we haven't got the wait time down far enough yet in terms of the reporting and interpretation of that. Some of that will be because some of the x-rays, some of the ultrasounds are not deemed as urgent and the cancer scans and the, the more urgent ones tend to take precedent and they keep going to the top of the list and the ones at the bottom never actually get to, to be seen. So I, I think we're conscious of that and we're actively trying to improve it. Now we've got the wait times down for the actual diagnostic, I think that's the next challenge for us. But on your, your wife's individual case, we'll pick that up with you afterward.
Sorry, can I just add a little bit more in relation to the reporting of the diagnostics? So nationally, it's a massive problem for the whole of the country, sort of UK wide too. And it's normally sort of the supply of radiologists that, that cause that. So nationally, Wales has sort of acted upon that and they've created an academy that looks at training more radiologists and, and reporting radiographers to address that particular issue, also focusing on sort of use of technology, things like artificial intelligence to help improve that staff shortfall we, we know sort of currently exists at the moment. We also currently have within the workforce reporting radiographers as well that have been trained under supervision from consultant radiologists to interpret certain diagnostics that help to improve that. And part of the strategy for us around the, the diagnostics workload is to increase the number of reporting radiographers that we have to help with that, but also work with some of our requesters, some of our GPs and also doctors within the hospital to ensure that those diagnostics are appropriate because I think there are examples where we have where pathways might not be so clear for GPs or doctors and they request, they over request some, some diagnostics. So there's two strands of work for us around helping to manage that demand, but also then supplementing sort of the, the workforce to, and using technology to try and improve that.
Councillor Harris, I think you want to come in on, on this point?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Coming in on what councillor Evans has just said, I know there's a problem in Neville Hall as well because I went for a foot x-ray a month ago and I know it's not particularly urgent, but I still haven't had the results. And I know the reason, it's simply, as you've already mentioned, there aren't enough radiologists or whatever they're called around the place. And it must be because of that, it must be costing the health service vast amounts of extra money simply because late diagnosis means more problems than early diagnosis usually. So I, you know, I sympathise with the problems down there and I know that I wouldn't deliberately not have the results of my x-ray because somebody couldn't be bothered. I know they haven't got the time to do it. So once again, sympathy, but we need more, we need more staff everywhere in the national health services, as simple as that. Thank you.
Okay, just before we move on then to, to Chris's verbal update, is this a link, link point councillor Debbie?
Sorry, Chair, just a quick one. You mentioned you had a contract with Gloucestershire for some services. I will say right in that verse, do you have a contract with Gloucestershire for some services?
No, we, we have an agreement that any page- No, we have an agreement that any patient from Monmashia or Wales that accesses services at Lydney, for example, on the minor injuries, we have a contract to pay for that service in the same way that anybody who is from Gloucester who comes to the Royal Gwent Hospital, for example, we have a contract with them, they have a contract with us to pay for that service. So it's a reciprocal contract. It's not a, it's not a contract in terms of numbers or a fixed amount of people that would go, it is a contractual arrangement where we pay and they would pay us for similar services.
Thank you for that. The point I was getting to really was with Lydney closing down and looking for an alternative. Now the geography of getting anywhere has changed completely and you can get to across from Chepstow to Bristol faster than you can get, almost faster than you can could get to Lydney. And there's a major hospital very close to us across there. So I just wondered whether that had gotten through your consciousness that there was a very good facility available to us if we were looking for elsewhere and ease of access for the ambulances.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've currently got patients who will be transferred from the Monmashia area to either North Bristol Hospital Trust or the BRI in the centre of Bristol, depending on the urgency of their case or condition, and also patients who may choose to go there. And in the same way, we have that reciprocal arrangement of payment should patients from Bristol come to Wales and vice versa. So I think it's, I think everybody's conscious that it exists. There's been a lot of work done with local facilities in Bristol for them to provide high services, for example, for patients in the east of Gwent over the last couple of years, as our provisions, we've struggled with provisioning in Gwent. And to get everybody through a waiting list, that's, that's been an ongoing contract that we've had. But that is a supply and demand contract rather than just a reciprocal income contract. But you're absolutely right, I mean, travel difficulties in, you know, Chepstow area are such that it is probably easier sometimes to get to other places than it is to get to Newport or Lydney.
Chair, it was only the ability to get across through to somewhere with Lydney closing down and it being closer, that's.
Thanks, thanks councillor Devi. Just, as I said, just before we move on to Chris's verbal update, Bronwyn, in terms of, obviously the analysis has been done for the clinical futures programme, the development beyond Llangvackfer. Where is the, the hospital currently in terms of capacity, because that, obviously that analysis has been done, and obviously bringing your programme and your action plan in place, what are we looking at in terms of, you know, the next year, next two years before Llangvackfer? Are we going to be up to 100% capacity?
I think in terms of certain pinch points within the hospital, we are very close to capacity, particularly around outpatients. We have got the space within the hospital, which is why we've got this proposed capital plan going forward for a range of schemes that will enable us to deal with those pinch points over the next two years so that we're fit for future. I do think, if I'm honest, that we're extremely lucky in Chepstow because there is space and that certainly isn't the case in other sites in Gwent, all other sites in Monmashia for that matter. Chepstow is probably best placed to cope with the increase in demand because the hospital has changed over years and the number of wards that were there when it was originally conceived 30 years ago just doesn't fit with the new model of community management of patients. More people are looked after at home, which means that the wards have reduced, which has given us the capacity to convert space to provide other services. But we will need capital in order to be able to do some of the work in the best possible way, because obviously different services require the space to be used in a different way and therefore need, needs a different infrastructure.
Okay, thanks for that. Chris, shall we move on to your update? Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. So as you will be aware, colleagues have given you an update in relation to the developments at Chepstow Hospital. So what I'm hoping to move on to now is to provide you with a verbal update specifically in relation to the changes around older persons with a mental health need, because I know we've discussed it in detail previously. So as the committee will be aware, the Health Board approved a number of recommendations last spring in order for us to redesign our specialist services for older adults with a mental health need. There were a number of key elements to that redesign and what I'm hoping to do is to provide you with an update in relation to each of those areas. So the first area of the redesign was in relation to how we needed to enhance and strengthen our specialist community services for older people with a mental health need. The second area that the Health Board approved last spring was for us to consolidate the number of our inpatient services, for us to move to having three inpatient dementia wards and one inpatient ward for older people with a functional mental health difficulty, so for example psychosis, a severe depression. So the Board approved those two things and in addition to that, it approved an additional investment of £200,000 specifically for Monmashia for the Health Board to work with partners within Monmashia in relation to enhancing our community services for older people with a mental health need. Okay, so those are the three areas that we've ended up progressing. I'm going to give an update in relation to the first two of those areas and Ben Bronwyn's going to complete the third area. So if we start with community services, there's been a massive amount of work over the last 12 months by the service in relation to further enhancing our community services for older people with a mental health need. And I'm really pleased to report, actually, in a relatively short period of time, we're already seeing significant benefits for residents from within Monmashia. So one of the areas that we've been keen to improve and enhance is the support that we provide to care homes, so very much some of the most vulnerable individuals with mental health difficulties who are in care homes. So how can we further support care homes? So we've introduced a new service called a behavioural support team that's able to provide advice and support and work alongside care homes in Monmashia for them to work with some of the individuals with the most complex behaviours. We've also been able to increase our nursing in-reach service into care homes. So prior to the changes, we just had one in-reach nurse who was trying to work right across Monmashia. And, you know, the geography of Monmashia was very difficult for that person to have good impact. So we've been able to increase that resource, so we now have an in-reach worker working with the care homes in the north of Monmashia and a second in-reach worker working within the south of Monmashia. Some of the stories in terms of the impact of those changes on the lives of individuals and how we've been able to support care homes, you know, provide the best support for individuals within those care homes has been truly really impressive and lovely to hear, actually. So that's one area in terms of community services we strengthened. The second area that we've been able to make changes was in terms of improving access to psychological support for older people with a mental health need. So unfortunately, before the changes that we made, Monmashia and Caerphilly had the longest waiting times for an older person to access psychological support. And I think we've been talking this morning about, you know, the impact of waiting a long time to access support that you require. So we've been able to increase the psychology provision within Monmashia. So just for example, last October, within Monmashia, we had 68 older people who were waiting for psychological support and the average wait their individuals were waiting was just over 40 weeks. So, you know, so people were waiting significant periods of time last October to access psychology. The data adds off last week, we have 47 individuals within Monmashia waiting for older adult psychology, but the average waiting time has come down significantly now to people who are waiting just over nine weeks. So I think you'll see, you know, we've still got work to do, but actually it's absolutely gone in the right direction. The third area in terms of developing our community services that we've been able to progress over the last 12 months is in relation to our memory assessment services. So as people will probably be aware, it's largely GPs who would refer an individual to a memory assessment service. And that memory assessment service is to offer support, to work with the individual and their families, to get a good understanding about what those person's difficulties are. It may result in a diagnosis of dementia, it may not. And then if that person is diagnosed with dementia, to think about what support that individual and their family require. So we've made a number of changes to memory assessment services. So memory assessment services, as you may be aware, are delivered from the three centres within Monmashia, Mardi Park, Monovale and Chepstow Hospital. So one of the changes that we've been able to make to memory assessment services is in relation to the role of a dementia support worker. So the Health Board has a contract with the Alzheimer's Society to provide that service, but we've been able to, there was significant pressure on being able to access that service. So we've been able to increase the amount of dementia support workers that are available across Gwent, including Monmashia. We've also been able to implement something called cognitive stimulation therapy. So this is an evidence-based intervention that supports people with mild to moderate dementia. So we now have a 12-week rolling programme which provides that therapy in all three bases right across Monmashia. If you look at the most recent evaluation data in terms of the impact that's having for individuals in terms of their wellbeing, in terms of their cognitive ability, in terms of their overall sense of wellbeing and support, it's lovely to see some of those results coming through. The other area, I guess I just wanted to highlight in terms of memory assessment services, is the length of time people are waiting for a diagnosis or being able to access a first appointment. So colleagues have talked about actually the, you know, the challenges of that. So in November 2017, within Monmashia, 75% of individuals who were being referred to the memory assessment service were accessing their first assessment within 28 days. A year later, in November 18, 100% of individuals were able to be seen for their first appointment within 28 days. So hopefully what I've shown is how we've been able to invest in some of the community services and the actual difference in impact that's making for Monmashia residents. So moving on to think about inpatient services and the changes that we made there. As you will be aware, it was a very difficult decision at the time and the decision was that Sam Pierre Ward within Chepstow Hospital closed. So we now have three inpatient wards for people with dementia and one ward for older people with functional mental health difficulties on the county hospital site. In terms of bed numbers, as we previously talked about, actually the bed numbers have reduced from 72 beds being available for individuals across Gwent to 67, so only a relatively small number of bed reduction. And you recall, a key factor in why we needed to undertake this change was not only being able to reinvest the money into our community services, but we were having massive difficulties in being able to recruit and retain our registered nurses within our inpatient services and that was a massive challenge for us. So we were relying significantly on temporary members of staff. That might have been our own staff working additional hours through bank time, but also through agency staff. And we were very mindful that just wasn't sustainable to provide a high quality service moving forward. So Sam Pierre Ward did close in April of last year and since that time, within Monmashia, 21 individuals with dementia have required admission. Some of the, majority of those individuals living within the north of Monmashia have gone to Yspity Tree coming Eber Vale and the majority of individuals from the south of Monmashia who've required admission have gone to the ward in St Woolish. It's been really important for us during that time to make sure communication between the Monmashia Community Older Adult Mental Health Team and the inpatient ward has worked really well and the service has developed a number of initiatives to enable that to happen. So for example, staff from the community, the Monmashia Community Older Adult Mental Health Team attend the inpatient multidisciplinary ward, so they're absolutely there in terms of providing continuity of care and thinking about discharge planning for the individuals. As I mentioned, one of the key factors for the changes within our inpatient services were our staffing difficulties and we knew it wasn't sustainable moving forward. And we know actually, if you have a ward which relies significantly on temporary members of staff, that directly impacts on the quality of care that you're able to provide. Workforce and recruitment of registered nurses has continued to be a challenge for us and colleagues have mentioned that continues to be a challenge across the Wales and the rest of the UK, but we have had significant improvements. So prior to the changes, we constantly had between about 14 and 18 vacancies within our inpatient services for registered nurses. That has now dropped to us now having five vacancies within our inpatient services. So although we continue to have significant challenges and the team worked really, really hard to try and fill those, we're in a much better and I believe a much safer situation than we were 12 months ago. We've also been able to reduce the number of bank and agency staff that we're requiring to use. One of the other elements that we were keen to do through the inpatient changes was to try and strengthen our leadership within our inpatient services. So it's enabled us to actually invest and enhance the number of deputy ward managers that we've had. And again, the wards, the feedback from the ward is that's proving to be very helpful. So that's a bit about the nurses in terms of the inpatient services, but also what we also wanted to do was to think about the broader multidisciplinary team within our wards. And I think it's probably fair to say progress in terms of strengthening those has been slower than the other areas. So the plan and the focus at the moment is to focus on improving speech and language therapy provision and pharmacy provision within those inpatient wards. And the plans are in place for us to try and increase those by July of this year. So I think probably what I've tried to do is give you a bit of a flavour in terms of the changes that we've made and how that's impacted, both in terms of developing our community services and for people who might need inpatient provision. So the third area that has been also invested in is the other areas of community services for older people specifically within Monmashia. And there's been some really innovative projects, I think, that we've taken forward in partnership to support older people with mental health needs in Monmashia. And I'm going to hand over to Bronwyn to give a bit of an update on those.
As people may remember, £200,000 was allocated to the Integrated Services Partnership Board for Monmashia to look at piloting new ways of providing community support for people with dementia. The schemes that we developed, there were five schemes in total, I'll quickly run through each one with a bit of a flavour about when it started, how much it costs, et cetera, and some of the benefits that have been reported. The first one is the Bridges Community Transport Scheme, which was an extension of the successful volunteer car scheme operated by Bridges. It started for this service in January and of the total of 524 passengers who are registered with the car scheme, we now have 48 of those with a diagnosis of dementia. So that has rapidly increased as a result of this service being developed. It is a Monmashia-wide service. The destinations that people are going to are not necessarily health and social care services as you would expect, it's allowing people to live their normal life. So just a bit of a flavour, people have been taken to the Senior Citizens Club, the Leisure Centre, the hospital, to the dentist, to the pub, to the opticians, to Wellfield Hall in Abbotvenny, all sorts of different venues really. So it has been used as we intended to enable people to continue to live as normal a life as possible. The view from Bridges is that the word is definitely starting to get out about the car scheme supporting people with dementia. They feel that the figures are really positive for the length of time the scheme's been running. Because it's only actively been promoted since the recruitment of the volunteer car drivers with a specific training around looking after people with dementia, they're very pleased with the way it's gone. Interestingly, nobody's actually requested a journey to St Woolish or to Eber Vale, which was one of the intentions of setting the service, was so that people could visit their relations who were admitted to a different hospital as a result of the closure of the ward. And since the scheme started, that's actually not happened yet. But just some of the brief examples that they gave us in their quarterly feedback of things that have happened. Frank goes to the Memory Cafe in the Men's Lunch Club without his carer, which provides respite for the carer. Two people have recently been widowed, but they've still been able to continue to attend their groups because they've been able to access the community transport to get them out, which is really important because after because they've been able to access the community transport to get them out, which is really important because after bereavement, obviously people are more vulnerable than normal. And people have continued to access the carer's respite service at Chepstow Hospital. People have been to the opticians, as I said, and appointments on their own rather than relying on their carers to be the driver for them. So just a few of the examples of that scheme. And that, to run that scheme for the full financial year for 2019-20 will be £40,000. That's the contribution that's made. Another scheme which we're really happy with is the Living with Dementia Exercise and Education Programme, which was run in partnership between the National Exercise Referral Scheme out of Chepstow and Caldicott Leisure Centres, employees of the council, and by the learning team of the council. And what they did was they put on a pilot, providing an exercise and wellbeing programme, which supported in the first instance, 12 recruits plus carers. No, 10, sorry, recruits plus carers. The idea is that they have initially an hour of gentle exercise, which can be participated in by both the person with dementia and their carer. It's chair-based exercise. It's not, it's not putting people at risk. What's absolutely fascinating is that of the people that completed the course, all of them have signed up for Leisure Centre membership afterwards without being press-ganged. So they obviously did find a benefit from the exercise part of the programme. And the wellbeing element of it was to support people to understand what they were entitled to, what the services that were out there that could support them and to enable them to build up group support within them. And that has happened with that group. What we learned from the pilot is that the selection of the first cohort of patients did result in some of them not being able to continue the course because it was, their level of dementia was quite well advanced and it was difficult for them. So what we've learned from it is, although they did benefit and they've actually maintained some of the social contacts for the carers in particular, what we're learning from it, and Chris's team and the Leisure Services staff are currently working on revising the criteria for admissions so that we can actually allow more people to gain access to this for the future. It evaluated extremely positively. As I said, everybody who stayed the course has joined the Leisure Centre. But not only that, they've actually formed social connections. It's provided carer support. And our intention is to roll that out so that it's available to people in other parts of Monmishaw as well. To run the programme for this year, which has recently been approved by the Integrated Partnership Board membership, it's going to cost £13,700 to continue that for four courses running throughout Monmishaw for the year. And I think it would be fair to say that it's been so positively received that it's something that's now being looked at with the potential for it to go up to the Regional Partnership Board for adoption as a scheme across the rest of Gwent as well. So it is, it's been really good scheme that has. We also ran a pilot for another project called Creative Lives Active Lives, which ran initially from Shire Hall in Monmouth as a pilot because we wanted to make sure that patients were covered wherever they lived. This was, I would have liked to do this myself, to be honest. This provided access for opportunities for participation in arts and culture, including using museum objects for reminiscence of living in the moment, handling sessions, dance, visual art, life story theatre, craft activities, music and accessible guided walks. The people who attended that absolutely loved it, both the dementia sufferers and their carers. A big lottery bid is being prepared for that scheme. They've used the results from the pilot, which make amazing reading from people's feedback, to enhance the bid, to actually make that bid more robust. And we are going to consider at the May ISP meeting, which is the next one, whether we should continue to fund that initiative just for the remainder of this year to enable us to carry on doing it pending the outcome of the big lottery bid. In order to, in order to do that, it would cost just short of £14,013,940 if we ran four of those. I think it was four, three of those, sorry, throughout Monmishaw. The main costs associated with that are for the leaders of each of the sessions because they've been using people from professional artists and theatre and what have you backgrounds in order to actually lead those groups. The feedback from the participants has been absolutely amazing. There've been a number of letters received saying how much people have enjoyed it. And they have actually said they would like to carry on, but our intention was to actually use it for new groups of people to enable them to start to form their relationships. And they have done that and they've already arranged the get-together of the participants on that programme because they want to continue to keep in touch with each other. So it does form friendships as well as prove a very enjoyable experience for people. The fourth one was development of a respite bed option. This has been run, managed through the Social Services team within MCC in terms of access to the bed, although all members of the Community Mental Health Team have got access rights, if the people are suitable. This scheme started on the 11th of January. And we've had, one, two, three, four, five people have been through the scheme between January now. Generally speaking, the period of respite is for up to two weeks. And the respite's been provided for a range of different things. Carers struggling to cope, assessment, an assessment period and trial for potential for long-term care, increase in anxiety and distress of the person who used the bed, respite for carers and having a need to go into hospital, into care whilst a large care package was set up were the reasons that have been the case for people so far. The report from the project lead on that one is that it's still early days, but they are expecting an increase in the use of the bed. So far, we have occupied the bed for 58 out of a possible 98 bed days between January and now. People do need to get used to the resource being available. And the feeling is that it was a really positive start and good uptake for a new project. But as in some of the projects, such facilities can be underused. And it's been, Claire's actually overall managing it. And I think she feels very pleased that it's got off to the start it has and that if we look ahead to six months' time, we'll see increased use and more people benefiting from that facility being there. The last one, oh, sorry, I forgot to mention the cost of that. The provisional allocation for that one is £47,500 for the full year. And the last one is the respite options for day services for people with complex dementias who are not able to access voluntary sector dementia day support. We haven't been able to access this through any of the voluntary organisations because they're unable to cater for people with the very complex demands. This scheme has proved quite difficult because originally the intention was to provide a service that people attended in a venue. And through discussion at the Integrated Services Partnership Board, it was felt that what we should be doing is providing bespoke support for individuals so that they are allowed to do what they used to do and that they have as normal a life as possible. And there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of options considered. Often these people have got quite challenging behaviour and it needs somebody who's an experienced qualified support worker to enable them to do what we envisage them doing. We've been through various attempts at finding a mechanism to enable us to deliver the service. It was investigated whether ABUHB could employ healthcare support workers. Unfortunately, they're not able to use healthcare support workers within the healthcare support worker framework unless they're directly managed by a registered nurse. What we wanted to do was for these people to be working in the community and they wouldn't therefore be directly managed by a registered nurse. So we're now looking at options for managing the staff through the council structure, which is also proving difficult to achieve within the regulations around employment of staff by MCC. And that has resulted in a delay in implementing the scheme. Options are being considered to move this scheme forward urgently. And hopefully, if you have got any questions about the employment side of it, Claire might be able to help with that because she's far more expert and involved in this than I am. But that is what the stumbling block has been with this particular scheme. But we're very happy that the other four have started and are working well. There is a residual amount that, for a full year cost for that respite option, it will be £62,000, which is basically covers the assumed costs of employing two workers, one for the north and one for the south and their travel expenses and supervision time, basically. The residual allocation out of the £200,000 for all those schemes, if they all run for the full year, which obviously we're now in a situation where we've got slippage on one of those schemes, there's a residue of £17,700 out of the £200,000. And what will be happening with that is that further gaps have been identified in our community services provision and a proposal will go to the Integrated Services Partnership Board's May meeting for options to use that money to make sure we use the full allocation. So that's a rundown of where we are with that at the moment.
Okay, thanks. Thanks both. Do officers want to add anything to those, comment in terms of those schemes at this stage?
Shall I just give a quick update on the respite, what Bronwyn was just talking there about, two members of staff. I've actually started to have conversations with Colin Richins, who manages our direct care staff. And there's, looks like there's a way forward in as much as the person could be employed by direct care but actually sit within the CMHT and their work would be allocated from the team. And obviously then they'd get their support from the team because, as you rightly said, these are people who've got more advanced dementias. And the reason why they had to be under a registered service was because of the personal care needs that they might have.
Okay, thanks for that. Before I go, I've got a few hands already. In terms of the data captured from the pilots, have you got the analysis of where those residents are within the authority area? Sorry, Bronwyn, could you just pop your microphone on, sorry?
Yeah, I have got the, I've got the breakdown here for Bridges. Everybody who attended the Living with Dementia Exercise and Education Programme was from Chepstow and Caldicott area, so south Monmishaw. Everybody who attended the Creative Lives Active Lives project was from north Monmishaw. It was opened up to Abbeville, Raglan and Monmouth. And the respite bed option, I don't have that, but I'm sure that will be easy for us to obtain based on where people live to have access to that, wouldn't it Claire? That wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, so of the people who've currently used the bed, I think two were from the north of the county. One was from Usk and two were from the south of the county.
Okay, councillor Eason.
Thank you. Just one brief question. On the presentation, you said that you're going to give support to private nursing homes. I presume that obviously is in Monmishaw. Would that apply to those across Monmishaw in general or Gwent as well in terms of those outside the Gwent boundaries? And the second question, which I can come to later if we talk later on about the housing developments in Gwent and Monmishaw particularly.
Okay, yeah, so picking up on the care homes question. So we've already, so across Gwent, we've had a piecemeal service in terms of in-reach service into care homes. So actually, there's been some boroughs within Gwent that's had quite a strong provision of support into care homes. Unfortunately, Monmishaw was not a borough that had that, so we only had that one worker for all the care homes across Monmishaw. So I guess what we've been able to do through the reconfiguration is to strengthen the provision to care homes across Gwent.
Does that apply to a Castleford house in Tetsil?
Oh, that's a good question. I honestly don't know the answer to that. Yeah, we could check out, I can check out and let you know in relation to Monmishaw residents who are placed outside of Gwent, what would be the support. But if there, for example, there is a Monmishaw resident who might be placed in a care home within Newport or within Torvine, those individuals, that would be easy and those individuals would be supported. We can check that out. Sorry, I don't know that either.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Tony. Councillor Pratt?
Thank you very much, Chair. It was very interesting what Bronwyn was saying. Obviously, you've gone into a lot of detail there. We had a very slim agenda, well, and very little information sent us before the meeting. I wonder if you could just put that down in writing so that we have an outline idea of where the money's being spent. And also, you said you didn't know there was future monies being spent. So if and when you know where that money's going, if you could also update us. Chair, I'm concerned that time is running on and I was hoping we'd get an update on Abbeville Hospital. And I've got some specific questions I want to ask about the Royal Gwent and Neville Hall. So I'm just a bit worried. We've got, we're very fortunate to have this panel of people here today and I'm just worried that we spend the rest of the time getting those questions asked. I would just like to ask about the beds because we spend a lot of time on this council debating the fact that the average age of the population here is 48. It's 34, I think, in Cardiff. And the situation is going to get worse and worse. The demographics of Monmishaw, I'm sure you're aware, are changing and we are becoming much more attractive as a destination for retirement. And this is going to have a huge impact on us in the future. So I'm very concerned about these beds and the fact that we've gone down from 72 to 67. And I'd like to know what your projections are for the next 10 years, given that the demographics are going to change dramatically. And how many beds do you think we'll need in 10 years' time? Thank you.
So just to pick up specifically on the issue around the beds, I guess there's two points I'd like to make. I guess the first thing that we were very much wanting to do through the service redesign, we know actually that if we invest our resources within the community services, we're able to support far more individuals than if you're putting them into beds. So I guess part of the model is around how we really strengthen our community services. But secondly, it's specifically in relation to your point around occupancy. We were really mindful about even a small number of reductions in bed. We wanted to see what impact that would have. So we monitor occupancy in terms of all of our inpatient services very, very frequently. And actually, what we found, and to be honest, we can't quite understand it. What we found since we've made the changes, our occupancy has reduced even more. So typically, to our dementia facilities at the moment, across the last year, about, only about 65% of those beds have been occupied. So we're trying to do a piece of work at the moment to dig underneath that and understand what that's about. One hypothesis, but I think all we can say at the moment is a hypothesis, is because of the way that we strengthen our community services, because of the way we've supported people within care homes, that less people are being admitted. But that's only a hypothesis that we need to be looking at.
Okay, councillor, oh, sorry.
Come back. So how many beds do you think you'll need in 10 years' time?
I haven't got a, why we're confident at the moment is the bed capacity that we have. have, we think will, is sufficient to meet need at this point in time and at least for, you know, the next little while. I guess we don't have a what do we need in 10 years' time, 20 years' time analysis.
Sorry, it's just worth pointing out as well, in terms of overall bed numbers, we, obviously we participate in national benchmarking and our older adult mental health bed numbers are in the upper quarter compared to the rest of the UK. So we've got, already got a lot higher bed numbers than most of Britain in older adult mental health. So a part of the work, as Chris mentioned, we really have to understand why our bed occupancy now is so, so low compared to what it was even two years ago.
Councillor Edwards?
It's a bit unstable. Thank you very much and thank you all for addressing us today, it's been very informative. It's such a shame there weren't more councillors here. Through a lot of it today, there's been the general theme of staff shortages, mainly in specialised areas as well as nursing staff, it's always in the press that we're very short of nursing staff. Now, through our lives, we can become parents or what, carers or whatever, we don't sit exams for that sort of thing, we just have to take it and learn from experience. And very often you're seeing in the press, and I know from personal experience of people who've wanted to go into nursing, and they've been put off by all the exams and all that sort of thing, when we, I suppose we tend to think of it as a vocational occupation and I always think a nurse is born, you can't really make them. And are we addressing any of that? Because we seem to be losing capacity for nursing in the country and yet there's a lot of people that would be very good at it and very willing to do it. Do we do more on the education in schools and so on? And I mean, years ago, you very rarely saw a male nurse, but you see, do see more male nurses now. And as we're all getting older in the county, especially Monmouthshire, there is more need for that care. And as you say, through some of it today, we're expected to keep people at home far more, but then you've got, families are very different to what they were a generation or two ago. You've got steps and splits and who's looking after the grandmother who's been, children have been married several times. And the housing hasn't got the capacity for keeping people at home and that sort of thing. So are you addressing any of this thing with the terrible need that we've got for good nurses, but they don't really need six A levels and all that to sort of do a very good job? Also, I live just outside Monmouth and do you work very closely with Hereford because an awful lot of people around Monmouth go to Hereford for care? Because through the, most of this this morning has been about Chepstow. And I'm thinking perhaps I better move to Chepstow, they've got an awful lot more facilities down there than what we have. And North Monmouthshire is very rural and we tend to rely on the air ambulance a great deal when there's need for accidents, especially on farms etc. So what you say is the ideal time from somebody having a broken leg in a field to when they can get to the hospital because it'd be at least half an hour or more from where I live.
Okay, thank you. If I could just answer the first question about the workforce. And you are right to recognise that the challenges we have with, with our workforce is definitely there, it's something we're facing and very much the reason why we've developed our Clinical Futures modelling in Gwent, because we can see the shape of the workforce and the challenges we experience, which is true right across the UK, so we're not unique here in this part of Wales for experiencing those problems. One thing that we've learnt and recognised is that if we can grow our own staff, we tend to retain them better. And, and that is really good for our community as well and good for our young people in terms of their careers because as a health service, we are the biggest employer in the region. And one of the, one of the areas of work we're really focusing on at the moment is something we broadly call widening access, to look to how, look to see how we can get people into health careers in a more imaginative and slightly different way than the traditional route of passing A levels, going to university and that kind of thing. And we're working very, very carefully to develop our healthcare support worker workforce, who we can recruit directly, we can train on the job, but then we can give them alternative access then into nursing careers, so they can progress from being healthcare support workers on to becoming registered nurses. And we can do that through working with our university partners. And we do, we did an awful lot of work at the moment with University of South Wales in terms of alternative nursing pathways for healthcare support workers where they could perhaps undertake a nursing degree as a part-time route, if they've got family to support and they can carry on working part-time as well. So we really are challenging the traditional way that we've trained our expert staff, if you like, because we recognise we have to, we have to change in the future. And that also applies not just to nursing but to all our professions. And we, we're even asking those questions about medical staff as well, how can we grow our own medical staff? And thinking about children who are in our schools in Gwent, how, how easy is it for them to pursue a medical career and get into what are very difficult courses to get into? And we're doing an awful lot of work with particularly sixth form colleges to support their students in how to apply for medical school, how to prepare them and that kind of thing. Because we recognise that if we can get people from our own local community to undertake those careers, those are the people who want to work with us, they want to stay with us and build their families here in this area. So it's a really positive move, we feel. And it's, it's one that's for the future, you know, we'll see the benefits of that in the future, but we recognise we need to do it.
Okay, I'm conscious if there's no more questions, that we, we do need to move on to the, the sort of the wider piece. Although it really is important that while we've got such a senior team who've come in to speak to us today, that we utilise this time. That's why I want, I didn't really want to rush through questions, you know, we've had a lot of information given to us today and then some, some really pertinent questions. Before we go on to the next session, can I just say, can we have just a short recess for four, five minutes and then we come back and then we'll, we'll wrap, hopefully wrap up this, this final piece within the hour? Okay, thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we can take our seats. We've got about 15 minutes, so I'm looking to wrap this up at one o'clock if possible, please. Okay, if we can do this final session and, as I said, look to finish at one o'clock. I think Leanne's going to give us a brief overview and then we can go to questions. Yep, thank you.
Good afternoon now. I'm just going to give you a brief overview of Clinical Futures, which for those of you that may or may not know, has been a very long-standing strategy of the Health Board. It's been around since 2004. And whilst the Grange University Hospital has acted as a bit of a lever in terms of some of the change and transformation that we are generating through that, it is a very much a whole system approach. It is not just about the buildings and there are three main strands to our strategy that I'd just like to, I guess, sort of provide an overview on and then talk a little bit about the configuration of the hospital sites as we see it going forward. So the three main strands of the Clinical Futures strategy is about providing as much care as close to home as possible. And you've heard lots of examples from the team about how that is happening. The currency of beds is very often sort of focused upon from a healthcare setting, but I think partly because of some of our workforce issues and an evidence base we have now that we know that beds aren't always a great place for people to, to be in in terms of their dependency going forward. It is, there is as much focus on the out-of-the-hospital sort of agenda as there is on, on the hospital setting. The second strand is really around developing that network of hospitals and you'll be aware of Asperty and Ironbevan opening and more latterly Asperty, Astridvower, as developing that network of hospitals so we can really start to describe that system of care that we have in place right across the county. And the final strand to it, announced and sort of approved by Welsh Government, was the agreement of the business case for the build for the Grange University Hospital, which came in October 2016. And again, I guess just to reinforce some of that information around how out-of-hospital is as important as the hospital setting, we deliver over 3 million GP appointments a year in Gwent and that compares to 1,600 critical care admissions. So the reality is, there's a very different scale of activity and service delivery that we're talking about for each of the different elements. And I think three main levers for change, we know that our demographics is, is changing, we know that people are getting older, their needs much more complex, we know that workforce supply is becoming sort of very challenging for us, so we need to have very innovative and different ways of working going forward. And also, much more latterly, and I think this is some of the rationale around, around the Grange in particular, there is much more of an evidence base around when you need that very specialist acute care, that access is less important than the quality of the care that you receive. So that example of critical care beds, having those centralised in one place, accessing services like cardiology, when you know you can get access to diagnostics on 24/7 basis and access to endoscopy if you are admitted with a, with a GI bleed for example, is all much more important from a patient is all much more important from a patient outcome perspective than actually trying to have that sort of delivered from multiple sites. So that is a cancer through of a really longstanding strategy. We've been really busy in the last sort of year or so, refreshing all of our clinical models. And in 2018, we assessed with the clinical teams against specific design principles, including home-to-home, patient-centred, evidence-based, prudency. We assessed forty-seven clinical models, so that we now have a much better idea of how the services can be configured and what services will be left on each of the sites, which I know will be a key area of interest for you, effectively. So just at a really, really simple sort of high level, the Grange University Hospital is probably, has always been very, we've been very clear about the types of services that will be delivered from the Grange. There are five hundred and sixty beds and cots and trolleys in the Grange University Hospital. We will have a 24/7 emergency department there for majors and resurs. We will have a fully functioning helipad there, so some of the concerns you have raised around access and getting to the hospital should you need it will be compensated for the fact that the helipad is literally across the way for entrance from the ED department. And that is not the case at the moment at Neville Hall and the Royal Gwent. If you are transported by helicopter at the moment at the Royal Gwent, you land in Tradega House and are then conveyed by ambulance. So I think there is some wider considerations to think about in terms of that access and some of the benefits that we will have from that bespoke build. All of our emergency surgery and trauma will be delivered from the Grange site. And again, really important that we will have staffed theatres for 24/7 with access to those diagnostics. And again, lots of evidence based from Royal College around what those services need to look like. At the moment, those services are delivered from the Royal Gwent and Neville Hall site, but there are times we can't staff that, and it means that we have to transfer emergency patients from one part of the county to the other, and that's not ideal either. But we believe by having all of those services co-located on the Grange site, we will be able to deliver a much more consistent, much better outcome for those emergency surgery and trauma patients. If you require the backup of critical care for elective surgery, so some of the comorbidities and complexities of some of our elective patients require backup of intensive care beds, that will be delivered from the Grange also. But for routine electives, that will be delivered from other sites, and I'll cover that when I come to the other sites. We have space for thirty critical care beds, and at the moment, that's a significant improvement. We currently have, we had on a permanent basis staffing for about twenty-one. Winter pressures increased that to twenty-three, and we have a plan to increase that. And that is a real feather in our cap across Wales. Wales has amongst the lowest number of critical care beds in Europe, actually. So it is a real opportunity for us to increase access to those services for our patients. Cardiology will be delivered from the Grange site, and with that comes an opportunity to repatriate some work that's currently happening in Cardiff, which is a real bonus for us. We will have access to diagnostics on a 24/7 basis, again, just to reinforce on the Grange site, that allows us to be able to treat those patients sort of much more quickly, in particular for their acute episode of care as well. Our hyperacute stroke unit will exist from the Grange, but you'll be familiar that that service is already centralised to give the benefits around patient outcomes. Again, it's one of those areas where there's a really strong evidence base around ensuring that people have access to the right treatment at the right time. It will house all of our consultant-led obstetric inpatient service. Consultant and midwife-led outpatient services will continue to be delivered from all the other sites as currently. But for the inpatient care, again, the evidence base is very strong for having all of those services delivered from one unit. Our neonatal unit will be delivered from the Grange site. Pediatric inpatient and pediatric inpatient surgery will happen from that site also. And again, that will be underpinned by access to MRI, CT and endoscopy on a 24/7 basis, which is a significant difference to the services that we're currently able to provide at the moment. And again, just to reinforce, whilst the unit will be amazing, it'll be a new estate, seventy-five per cent single rooms with, so the wards will be thirty-two beds, seventy-five per cent single rooms with two four-bedded bays for acute observation. It's not somewhere that you would aspire to be, because if you're there, it means you're pretty unwell, I think it's fair to say. As nice as the environment will be when you are there. But bear in mind, I'd just like you to bear in mind that, as I said, you would need to be very unwell to be there, and it will affect relatively small proportions of patients comparative to our overall service delivery. Timescale, Nick has already alluded to this, of a development of this scale. It's ahead of time, ahead of budget, believe it or not, actually. And the planned opening date is March 2021. We expect the hospital to be handed over to us for commissioning in September 20, so that we have a good period of time to commission the hospital appropriately and to give teams time to bed in, understand what the new environment looks like, and allow the other sites to reconfigure as well. Because whilst the Grange has been that focus for us around the changes that we're making, what we must have in our minds as important is how the configuration of the services look in other hospital settings as well. Which leads me nicely on to, I guess, so what's left in terms of Royal Gwent and Neville Hall. So at a really high level, both Neville Hall and the Royal Gwent will have access to exactly the same emergency or urgent services, very important to determine. So both will have a 24/7 minor injuries unit. The only functioning emergency department we will have will be at the Grange site, so there will be no emergency department at either the Royal Gwent or Neville Hall. One of the really important things to determine about that is that, so I guess, a main concern is what happens if someone pitches up at those hospitals if they're unwell and they require more acute support. And one of our most important and heavily attended areas of work, very much supported by the doctors, is our transport area of work in terms of what our patient transport system looks like, both from an emergency perspective and also on a more routine basis. So we have, I think, a very well-developed Plan A, B and C in terms of that emergency transport system. There's a service that's currently provided called EMERTS that is not just helicopter but ambulance-based for those very acute emergency transfers that need to happen, and they will service any patients that attend at either of those hospitals that then require transfer to the Grange if they are acutely unwell. And that has been one of the key risks that we have been working on mitigating. And we are working hand-in-hand with ambulance around commissioning our own services to allow that to happen, so that we have some guarantee in relation to that, because it is so important. So Neville Hall and Royal Gwent will have that 24/7 minor injuries unit. It will also have a medical admissions unit that will operate on an eight till eight basis, and that will accept GP emergency sort of referrals. And one of the key elements of the programme is that we will have a system in place called pre-hospital streaming, which sounds very technical, it really isn't. It's basically a person on a phone, ensuring that we are routing the patient to the right place first time. And I think that will be a significant enhancement or improvement on the system that we currently have. At the moment, that can vary to an admin person taking a call, to a more junior sort of clinical person. So by having all of those senior decision-makers, in particular consultants, at the front door and holding that phone, we will have, I think, a better assessment, a more senior assessment of where the patient needs to go and at the most appropriate time, because there is a slight variation, I think, in terms of emergency care and urgent. And one of the questions I think we are asking more and more is, is this person best served by booking them into an appointment tomorrow morning, where they might be able to access a diagnostic, so they get a fuller treatment, and they're not sat in a hospital waiting overnight? So those are the sorts of changes and transformations that the teams are currently working on and we're planning on at the moment. The Neville Hall site in particular will be slightly different in some respects to the Gwent, and there are some very good reasons for that. So Neville Hall will have a surgical day centre, daycare unit, and again, we deliver over forty thousand elective treatments, eighty per cent of those are over our day cases. So we would expect significant volumes of elective surgery still to be able to be done at Neville Hall site. We were very fortunate in being selected as the preferred site for a development of a satellite radiotherapy unit at Neville Hall as well. So as part of that development, the organisation is currently developing a case to create a local cancer centre. We will not be able to, just to be very transparent and clear, that won't entail any surgery, because for cancer surgery, you will need more acute backup. But there are significant volumes of patients that can and do receive the chemotherapy, for example, at Neville Hall, and that would absolutely continue, and in fact, we could be doing more of that, albeit there is also a push to deliver more of that even closer to home again, ten of us, Van being an example of that. But also some of the therapeutic input around and voluntary sector support for patients with cancer post-treatment. We would expect that to be enhancement of our cancer centre at Neville Hall. And then, I guess, each of those sites will also have an emergency frailty unit. So you've already heard from Bronn and Tracy, the development of the elderly frail unit at Chepstow. And that is part of a growing, I guess, sort of piece of work around how frailty looks across the whole of the system. And both of those units will have those emergency frailty units, so that more complex patients' needs are met also. And the Royal Gwent, the variation to the Royal Gwent is that it will host a, what we called a post-anesthetic sort of recovery unit, that will allow us to do the bulk of our elective surgical treatment for inpatients. Now, there are some real significant issues for us at the moment in terms of how we treat our elective patients. Last year, we cancelled over fifteen hundred patients because we didn't have beds for those patients because of our emergency pressures. And the reconfiguration of our services effectively means that we can protect that elective work at the Gwent with provision of this post-anesthetic care unit. And I think that is a massive win for us in terms of patient experience, because that is not great for us at the moment. So it is a massive, I'm aware of time. Trying to do one of the biggest sort of transformation agendas in NHS sort of generation is quite challenging within the timescale. But it is a huge piece of work. Approximately six thousand staff will be affected by the changes that we're making. In addition to, as I said, sort of, you've heard already from me about the forty-seven clinical models that we've currently reviewed and then sort of pieced together from a hospital sort of perspective. It has predicated us on us being able to recruit into a number of posts for which we have undertaken feasibility studies, we have tested to ensure. There's no point having a plan on a piece of paper if we can't then implement it. So we are continually testing our ability to recruit into some of those posts to deliver what we can deliver at the moment. And the plan, as I've described it, is where we're at here and now. If that changes, the plans may change, but they are constantly under review for those reasons, effectively. Probably just as well.
Yep, do you want to add to that?
Thank you, Leanne. I just wanted to add on to Leanne's presentation just to say something very briefly about our women and children's services. Just use the opportunity to update you on some of the current challenges that we're facing now. With the Grange University Hospital opening in spring 2021, it is less than two years, and we really are in touching distance, but for some of our services, that can't come soon enough, because the very reason why we've got the Clinical Futures Plan and the Grange University Hospital is to address some of the real issues that they're facing every day in trying to maintain a very specialist workforce, when that workforce just does not exist across the UK. And also trying to maintain highly specialist services spread on multiple sites is in itself very challenging and goes against best practice. So for those teams, moving into the Grange is something that can't come soon enough. And in the meantime, they are really doing a great job of maintaining services on the Neville Hall site and the Royal Gwent site. And we've got an amazing team of clinicians who do that, from the consultants, the junior medical staff, the nurses, the midwives, who are working so hard. But it's important I do make you aware that some of our women and children's services are really challenged at the moment. We, as an executive team, in conjunction with the clinicians, we monitor those services very carefully on a weekly basis. And I can assure you that the services are safe at the moment, but they are incredibly fragile. And we feel very much we're in a transition period at the moment, and we're working with those services to prepare them for the change, when they will come together as one team. It's important to say that, you know, for women and children's services, those services are very much planned to centralise on the Grange University Hospital site. That was very much part of the consultation. But for the majority of the care, for paediatrics and for midwifery care, that will continue to happen at the local general hospitals. So women will still be able to have a midwifery-led delivery at Neville Hall and at the Royal Gwent in the future. And the same with paediatrics. The majority of paediatric care happens, not in a hospital bed, but it happens in outpatient clinics, in the community clinics. And for paediatrics, the majority of that care will still happen, but it's only the inpatient beds that will centralise at the Grange. So we're working very closely with those teams at the moment as they transition towards that. And we are very much aware that there may be a, reach a situation where they can no longer continue operating on two sites, and there may be a need for us to centralise those services in advance of the Grange and bring that forward. At the moment, we've not made a decision to do that. That would require an awful lot more planning than we have in place at the moment. In particular, it would require us to plan very carefully with our neighbouring health boards. And that is because we're not the only ones facing this challenge. Our neighbours are as well, and for them, we'd have to make sure that whatever we do here in Gwent, we don't destabilise our neighbouring health boards as well. And it's until we have a level of confidence around that that we feel we can move forward with any kind of transition plans moving towards the Grange. So effectively, I just wanted to kind of make you more aware of that. As probably of all the services that we are working with to move towards a Clinical Futures Plan, it's probably our women and children's services that we are probably most concerned about, and making sure that they continue to be safe until that date that we're moving. And it is quite possible that we might need to move to some transition arrangement in advance of the new hospital opening, but we'll keep you updated on that if that emerges. But for now, I can just assure you that the services are safe where they are.
Great, thanks. Peter, I'm conscious of time, and I want questions to be as succinct as possible. I'll allow you one secondary, and I'll start with the Abergaveni councillors first if I can. So councillor Pratt and then councillor Woodhouse.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And, I mean, it's been a fascinating morning, and I know that there's not every single councillor that here is absolutely passionate about the National Health Service. And in context, we do have one of the best national health services in the world, and for that, we are very grateful. But I want to ask particularly about Abergaveni Neville Hall Hospital and the Royal Gwent, because we've talked about the elderly, and a lot of elderly people end up having hip fractures. And only a very small minority of those people who have this surgery will actually, you know, return to have the same abilities as they had before. And this has a knock-on effect for our service, our care team, who obviously have to care for these people after this surgery. And also, you know, it's at a great cost to the National Health Service. Now, in the National Hip Fracture Database report that came out last year, Now, in the National Hip Fracture Database report that came out last year, Neville Hall Hospital and the Royal Gwent were highlighted as having some of the highest mortality rates in the United Kingdom. And Neville Hall, actually, it states that those missing and poor quality data was an issue at Neville Hall Hospital. And to put this into context, I used to be a councillor in Poole and we have a very large number of elderly patients in Poole, as you can imagine. And most of people having this surgery would come from care homes. And their mortality rate in Poole is three point five per cent. Whereas in the Royal Gwent in twenty sixteen, the mortality rate was twelve point six per cent. It did slightly go down to eleven per cent in twenty seventeen. What concerns me is that, you know, people are dying in Wales that wouldn't die in England. I know that in England, they do get an incentive of one thousand three hundred and thirty-five pounds per patient for getting the surgery done quickly, because the thing with hip surgery is the longer you wait for it, the more chance there is of you having, you know, a poor outcome. So I'd like to know really what's happened since this report, which came out last year. What has happened to try and improve these mortality rates? And a couple of things that are highlighted in there is the six performance indicators that need to happen so that people have good outcomes. And secondly, that where there is increased mortality, because there's been a steady improvement in England in this particular area, but in Wales, there's been no such improvement. And they do also advise a multidisciplinary service review from the British Orthopaedic Association. And I wondered if anything like that had taken place in either the Neville Hall or the Royal Gwent Hospital. Thank you very much.
Okay, interestingly, I was talking to one of our senior clinicians about the hip fracture work on Friday. And happily, I can report to you that current mortality at the Gwent is seven point six per cent. So there are hip fracture, fractured necophema, work stream has been a focus of the health board for a while now. And the health board, in partnership with the partnership boards as well, had invested in a very well-developed, the evidence base around how we treat hip fracture patients is very sound and already sort of well-known. So one of the areas of investment that was made a little while back, probably about two years ago now, to eighteen months, was that half a million pounds was invested out of the Integrated Care Fund in developing, in particular, ortho-geriatrician support in the hospital. And the reason that that is so important, because it's actually one of the oddities in relation to investment in hospital services, having a benefit out in the community. There's a nice economic model that shows that the reliance on social services at the end, if you treat that patient in particular with ortho-geriatrician support in the hospital setting improves. And the outcomes have been able to get those patients back out to their home, not reliant on sort of social services is much better with hospitals' support. So in the Gwent in particular, there was no ortho-geriatrician, dedicated ortho-geriatrician support. We now have a consultant dedicated to that on the Gwent site. And he's currently undertaking regular multidisciplinary ward rounds. And it is very much a multidisciplinary approach, what you've said is absolutely correct. Physio OT development of roles such as rehab assistants on the wards, so that we're helping to mobilise patients, get them back functioning as well as they possibly can, as early as they possibly can, is key to that. That said, there's an awful lot of work that's also gone on in terms of prevention of falls in particular. I know I'm probably less qualified to talk about that, but the prevention agenda is also sort of very important. And whilst we can report that the mortality rate has reduced, it's an area of work that remains high on our priority list from a Clinical Futures perspective about ensuring that the new system of care that we have in place when the Grange opens in particular and in the lead-up to that continues to be progressed and enhanced with that ortho-geriatrician support and the multidisciplinary way of working. Because in the new system, all hip fractures will be treated and operated upon in the Grange site, which will give us some benefits, because all of our teams will be co-located then, they'll be in the same place with a view that they will be able to step down to their local hospitals as soon as they possibly can to generate that sort of care close to home.
Do you want to come back, councillor Pratt?
Thank you very much. I mean, it's very good to hear that those results are obviously getting nearer on a par with England. Obviously, can't wait for the Grange to open, but we've got to make sure we maintain standards between now and when that does open. And we don't want to see people dying unnecessarily. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Woodhouse.
Thank you, Chair. I've been to several presentations about Clinical Futures and this has been really informative, thank you very much. I've just got a couple of little points I'd like to clarify. But before that, it's good to hear about the future use of Neville Hall in particular with regard to radiotherapy and the cancer care. I have heard about this, it's been in the press. But please, please, continue to get as much information about that out in the public realm as you can, whether it's through the press or newsletters. I'm involved with several voluntary groups and we would all appreciate just, not too much detail, but just updates on the progress, because I can feed that back to some of the groups I'm involved with. But it is good to know that is happening. With regard to the, the last I heard, Neville Hall was proposed to have a hundred and seventy-seven beds. You described day surgeries being one of the most important things you're going to do there, one of the most widely used. Has the number of beds changed then? Will there be fewer inpatients? That's just one question. And another point, something else I've read in the paper, main diff court has been referred to as being underused. Do you have any plans for that, that we can, you know, we'd like to know what's in the future for that as well? Because that's something that obviously you can transfer services to Neville Hall or to other hospitals. But if you could update us on that, it'd be appreciated.
Okay, so in terms of the original case for Clinical Futures, suggested a hundred and seventy-seven beds for Neville Hall. Absolutely right. With the shift from inpatient to day case beds, that does take the bed base down at the moment for Neville Hall Hospital to a hundred and eighteen, that's the planned, the planning assumption that we're currently making. These numbers are changing all of the time. I think sort of the services are modifying their models, they're changing sort of them. So that is as at today. It probably won't be that tomorrow or the day after. But there are very clear sort of rationales for sort of the use of beds. And as I said, just to reinforce the point I made earlier, really, the way in which we are delivering care is significantly changed, even in the relatively sort of short time, I think I've been involved in Clinical Futures. More models around things like ambulatory care, so we're less reliant on inpatient services. The shift from inpatients to day cases is yet another area. And you hear all of the time of developments of things that historically have been very inpatient-based becoming day case almost. My father-in-law had a vascular surgery that was a twenty-three-hour stay that would have resulted probably five years ago or so in open surgery, that meant he had two weeks in critical care. So with technology changing and things like interventional radiology, our bed base, I would expect to a certain extent to reduce and maybe offset some of the demands around the increase in sort of age profile and the complexity of the patients. So a hundred and eighteen is our current planning assumption for Neville Hall site. In terms of main diff court, alongside the wider sort of Clinical Futures, the service transformation that we're currently doing, there's also a strategic estate stream of work that looks at all of our estates and what that means in terms of the backlog, the risk we have, the use of services sort of provided there. And I know that there are some plans and discussions around how we, for example, co-locate maybe traditional sort of mental health wards alongside physical health wards because of the benefits that that brings. And they are currently in the process of being worked through at the moment. So yes, I would expect there to be changes in terms of some of those community facilities. And when I think we're clearer about that, we'll come out and talk to you about that at the same time.
Councillor Woodhouse, do you want to come back?
Just as I say, with regard to communication, please, can you, I mean, I know you've got lots of things online, but if you can get some sort of, your newsletter, which I know you've got one for staff and other newsletters, but if you can make sure they go out to voluntary groups as well. Because people like the League of Friends, W N V S, I could reel off a list of, I know all hospitals have got many, many organisations involved with them. But they are the people who really need to know what's happening, because they can then spread the word to the members of the public they deal with.
Okay, thanks for that. I've got councillor Easton, then councillor Edwards, councillor Harris. And sorry, councillor Thomas then, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Chair. Just a brief question. On the opening of the Grange, how will that affect the day-to-day operations at the Gwent and Neville Hall in terms of people visiting and parking, which is a horrendous situation? Will it relieve any of the day-to-day requirements that you've still got in those two hospitals? In terms of helicopters, yes, I can understand the logistics of that. But will it relieve the pressures on both those two hospitals in terms of people going to visit their patients or whatever they're there?
I think inevitably, there will be, the centralisation of some services to the Grange will mean that there are less people either at the Royal Gwent or Neville Hall than there are now, or less people visiting, which potentially gives us more space in the current configuration of both of those sites. There is, you know, as Leanne just alluded to, we are currently working through what does our estate look like post the Grange being opened. And I suppose a lot of the estate that we've got, particularly at the Royal Gwent Hospital, is quite old and probably needs removing. And whether that's doable from our point of view because of the services that are fed through is a completely different question. But that would give us then provision for more car parking, for better access, for, I suppose, making the sites much more accessible and easier to work their way around and ultimately visit. In terms of the Grange, now, somebody did tell me how many car parking spaces there were, there were a huge number, aren't there?
Yeah, no, there's more, detailed modelling has been done in relation to the Grange in particular because of, obviously, sort of, it is such a hot topic. So parking at the Grange won't be a problem at all. I should have the numbers off the top of my head.
I think it's nine hundred and fifty. I want to say nine hundred and fifty, it's how many there are.
Councillor Easton, sorry, can you use your microphone?
Can't park in the Grange, should not be of a problem, because there'll be critical care and it won't have the same mass that you've got in the other two hospitals.
I think the other thing to say is that we are looking, as part of that wider system, it isn't just about the Grange Hospital. So why are we bringing patients back for routine follow-up appointments when we can communicate with them in a different way or have a consultation in a different way? So some of that might be a telephone clinic appointment. When you think of some of our frail, more complex patients, it's a real trial to get into a hospital setting, both in terms of the transport, the parking, sitting in a busy outpatient appointment for something that may only take a number of minutes.
I'm pleased you've got that plug in there as well then, Tony, at the end, thank you. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you. Well, it's just really a follow-up to Tony's and the parking. As I say, I've got to travel at least half an hour to get to a hospital. And if my husband's got an appointment, you have to make sure there's somebody taking him. You sit in the car, you keep driving around so that you can still keep that appointment. Because you, you know, you've waited for the appointment, you don't want to lose it. And I think that is quite an issue in Monbushia, because there is a very good public transport. So you do depend on somebody taking you. And if you can't park, what do you do but drive around and hope that you can find a space? But also, when we, councillor Woodhouse mentioned main diff court, as thinking that perhaps not everybody needs to go to Neville Hall for that clinic, that it could be just somewhere else so that it would take a bit of the pressure off the parking, as it's not very far from Neville Hall and it's in that vicinity. As you said, do you always need to go to the clinical area for a follow-up appointment or whatever? And perhaps work needs to be done more on what we've got and how we can use it best, especially because we're never going to get rid of the car, are we? And we very often get highlighting, when you go to the doctor's surgery, how many appointments have been missed, not cancelled properly for somebody else to take them. And that in itself is a terrible waste of resources. And perhaps we get the health tourists and all that sort of thing, but there is an awful lot for you to take on board. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Harris?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, councillor Woodhouse mentioned newsletters. I'm about to put out a newsletter in my ward and it goes to a thousand households. If you could give me something definitive, pretty quick, probably through Hazel, on Neville Hall or whatever you want me to say as well about the Grange, I'd be ever so grateful.
Thank you. We'd really welcome that opportunity. I think lots of the feedback we've had, until we've worked through the clinical models, it's really hard to know at what point we need to properly sort of now engage with our communities, because we need to have something certain to share with you. There's nothing worse than causing confusion. So I think that, and we've had lots of offers of help, I think now we have that clarity of what the system looks like. It's been really heartening to hear sort of almost lots of offers of support and assistance with that, because we absolutely want people to know where to turn up, how we do that as well, how we let people know and what we very often are, it's very often, we like to confuse matters or complicate and have really difficult descriptions. So how we simplify some of that, where would I go if, I think is key to that. And I know that with your help, we very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Thomas?
Yeah, I'd agree with councillor Harris, I'm going to put out a letter and information like that is useful. I would say that particularly with older people, there is a concern, and particularly people who live in rural communities around Abergaveni, I live just outside Abergaveni, about what's happening. And I think for them, travelling is an issue. And another issue that comes to my mind, and certainly people have raised it with me, and particularly for people in Abergaveni area, if you had, you know, a major heart attack, you know, being transferred by road, the road link from Abergaveni going down to Cymbran is not particularly good until you get to Pontypool. And particularly the Llanelland Bridge, which was built about eighteen hundred for Pony and Trap and not for a quick transfer by road. And that does concern me, you know, that area floods and the bridge is shutting, you have to go, it was a B-road, you know, to get there. Plus the fact of people living in South Powys, I suppose, who will probably go to the Grange. But I was reassured by what you said about the helicopter.
Okay, councillor, sorry.
Just one thing I think is important to say. So one of the other things that we're looking at, so when the Grange was originally, sort of, the original business case was done, a lot of modelling was done with Welsh Government in terms of the optimal placement of the Grange Hospital. And actually, the optimal placement was about a quarter of a mile or so up the road. But I think next to the crematorium might not have been sort of the preferred option, although there might have been some process benefits from that. So actually, from a centralisation perspective, the Grange is very well sort of cited. We know that travel remains a concern and outside of the work we're doing with ambulance, we're engaging with public transport bodies. So we've had conversations with train companies, bus companies around what, how the different companies connect so that we can connect all of our hospitals going forward, so that if people are reliant on public transport, that will be better. They've been reluctant to engage up until now because we've been so far out from a timescale perspective. We're less than two years now, so they are coming to the table and talking. And in fact, I think some of the early signs that we're seeing is an increase in frequency of bus service connecting the hospitals. So I would hope that that would continue.
Before, yeah, councillor, before I go to, I've got councillor Devon, councillor Powell. Before we move on, while we're on this transport question, I know councillor Brown, who couldn't be here today, had a number of concerns about connectivity. Just be interesting to know how you've worked that piece through with WAST, particularly obviously the reality of this part of the health board footprint. And what else are you doing in terms, aside what you've said, trying to ensure that those clinical outpatient appointments are done as close to the resident? that those clinical outpatient appointments are done as close to the resident's home as possible? But what other work is being done, probably on a regional footprint, because it's going, obviously, it's going to cross boundaries in terms of transport? How is that being shaped? I'd just be interested to know, please.
So in terms of WAAST, we've done, the piece of work around the transport has been very detailed. So we've looked at likely presentations of patients, numbers of patients that we would expect to need to be transferred. The emergency transfer model, we have a number of different options. So we have the EMERCE option. We've got, as part of an outreach from our ED department, a Physicians Response Unit. So we have a roving sort of consultant on the ground in addition to then sort of supplementary sort of ambulance work. So they've been involved in the really detailed numbers modelling that we've done, that is continuing to be refined, that with a, the plan will be that in the summer, we'll go forward with a specification for the volumes of patients that we believe will need to be transferred. So the level of detail is significant, and we have representatives from all of the key services that would use that facility, sort of within the room, paediatrics, anaesthetics, sort of critical care, sort of, and the key sort of specialties where we believe that would happen. So there is some detailed work around that, a significant amount of detailed work around that. Your question in relation to the regional footprint, do you mean in terms of the work that is happening about what services are likely to be regionalised? Okay. So two key areas that are currently, certainly on my radar at the moment, that I think are pretty well-known already, vascular services and major trauma. So both of which, I think, have been sort of subject to sort of quite a lot of work over a significant period of time. At the moment, I think major trauma is more advanced than vascular, and the reality is, I haven't got the numbers, I'm waiting on that from our planning leaders, leading on it from a Health Board perspective, but the numbers for major trauma in particular are very, very small, because you were talking about the very, very serious sort of accidents that require multiple sort of subspecialties, lots of which we would be able to absolutely cope with in the Grange. But many of them may need to go to Cardiff, for example, pelvic surgery, for example, they would need to travel to Cardiff. But those numbers are really, really small. In terms of the vascular work at the moment, I don't anticipate vascular, albeit there is, there has been sort of a high-level discussion about vascular services being centralised in Cardiff. I don't see that being imminent, and we are planning to take vascular services into the Grange in particular. Our facilities will be second to none in particular because of the interventional radiology support that we have there and access to theatres and access to diagnostics. So that, we are planning, as I said, on opening those services in the Grange site until we're told any different from a regional perspective. And my personal opinion on this is that I don't see that being ahead of the Grange.
So we've got councillor Deve, and then finally, I think councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, a little while ago, about six months ago, I had an accident at home. I fell, and I fell badly, and it was nothing to do with my liking for gin or anything like that. It was early in the morning, and I was fine. And one of the things that came about was we couldn't get through to anybody in the local hospital. So we went through to the, well, my wife went through, to the place where you get advice, you know? Whatever she did, she got advice, which got me into the, they said, I should be got into the hospital, which was, was fine. The thing that was difficult was for her to find somewhere to get into the hospital, to park the car, to get me out and whatnot. It was ridiculous. And eventually, a fairly good guy who was looking after the parking had sorted us out. But the thing that came across to me was the huge problem that there is with parking, and nobody seems to try to be creative in looking at what the possibility is for doing something, something different to what we have at the moment. And when I was in the hospital, they told me that one of the biggest problems that they get is cancelled appointments across virtually every one of the skills, if you like, huge number. And they believe it is because people just won't wait. They give up and go home or whatever, whatever it is. I mean, I was in there until the early hours, well, I was in there all night, but my wife was able to stay with me because she had a motorcar and could go home. If she hadn't had a motorcar, she'd have left me or taken me back or whatever. So this is
Councillor Deve, sorry, you come into a question, sorry.
Yes, I have. Really, have you explored any way that with the local authorities, that you can set up a system where, say, you have a regular bus that is going to the car park at Newport away, and they go at certain times, so people can get there and park and can get to the hospital for that? The other thing that was, I was really aware of, they were trying to find me a bed. And they found me a bed about half past two in the morning. And it was only when I woke up in the morning that I found that I'd been to bed with five ladies during the night. Now, I wasn't particularly embarrassed about that, but it could really have been a thing for them. So, you know, that worried me a bit. The other thing was the appalling food. God, you've got to do something about the food in Newport. It is disastrous. I couldn't eat it. And the final thing, I'd like you to consider with this new hospital that you are creating, to think about now how you do create a film about its inception, what happened, and it goes through, so young people can be enthused by it, and also about what is going to happen there. Because we're talking about the shortages of young people going into nursing, going in to be doctors and that sort of thing. And we're doing nothing in our schools about it, as far as I can see. And I would have thought that in Monmouthshire here, we have three coming up for, four of the best schools that you're going to get in Wales, with young people searching for careers. It would be a great time for us to be, you looking at that and investing some money in that and grow, see if we can grow our own, rather than having to look elsewhere.
Okay. I think we've got, so we've got Park and Ride, we've got placement of single-sex wards. I know that's a particular issue that, just to you, you know, it might have been accidental. We've got food, and then we've got education, I think, we have touched on a bit of education. So, yeah, okay.
Be brief, if you like. So on the subject of Park and Ride, we are in active discussions with Newport City Council about provision of Park and Ride and transportation services to the Royal Gwent Hospital. We could obviously have a similar conversation with Monmouthshire around provision at Neville Hall. No, no, so I'm talking about the areas in particular in Gwent. So we are in conversations about that. In terms of your own particular experiences around food, and I would suggest you were perhaps on an assessment unit rather than a ward, which is perhaps why you woke up with in a mixed-sex area, because our breaches of mixed-sex accommodation are virtually zero outside of the assessment areas. But we can pick up with you individually, any concerns that you've got with regards to that, and also the food. Because I think there's widespread feedback around the food, both positive and negative many times, and we have recently changed the way in which we deliver food in our hospital wards, and most of the feedback we get is very positive, and has been, and the way in which we now deliver meals has been adapted based upon the feedback that we've had from patients about portion size and things like that. So if there's particular individual concerns, we're happy to pick those up with you. And I'm trying to remember the last point. Education, which I think we covered.
Okay, councillor Powell?
Very quickly, because I know they're waiting to come in, this parking problem at Neville Hall is exacerbated because so many people park their cars there, they get on the bus, I've seen them do it, to go into town, and others get on the bus and go to Brecon. And if, I know it's horrible to say, charge for parking, but if we charge for parking and then those that had an appointment had the money back, that might stop that. A lot of the places are taken by people who've parked and gone into town on the bus. Right, that's
Thank you very much. So just to summarise, we've covered a huge amount of ground this morning. In terms of capital development and service re-provision in Chepstow Hospital, I think the action plans, the action points out of that was an action plan on the development, so we're clear on timescales, and we can monitor progress. So if we could have that, that would be really useful. And then going forward, we'll look at developing some sort of quarterly monitoring. We'll have to look at the data sets and come back to you for that to see what would be most beneficial for us to monitor. In terms of adult older mental health care, the update there, I think it would be useful to see the data that underpins those various pilots and initiatives, if that could be circulated to members, so we can have a look at that in detail. And then on the Clinical Futures update, I think councillor Harris's point that in terms of information to update the public would be really useful. So anything you feel is, would be merit in that, if that could go to Hazel and that could be circulated. And in terms of communication with us, I don't know whether we can have some sort of a higher level action plan, just so we can monitor the timescales leading up to 2021. I know you said there's going to be a sort of handover a year September, but it'd be good just to see milestones, but very high level for us. So can I thank everyone from the LHB for coming in? I appreciate it's taken quite a bit of time, but I think it was time well spent, and that information that we've gleaned has been really, really helpful. And can I thank officers and councillors as well? The next ordinary meeting of Adult Select is tomorrow, 10 o'clock, obviously pre-meeting half past nine. So thank you very much.